The Bureau has been receiving related historic resources. The Commission will be presenting their eighth annual report to the Council, and I will note that this is, the Commission has been operating in the city since 1975. So without further ado, I'd like to bring up the Chair, Kirk Renzetta, and Vice Chair, Paul Salamano.
Great, welcome, come on up.
Thank you very much, Council and Chair, for inviting us to present the State of the City Historic Preservation Report. I too would like to recognize, I think, our fellow Landmarks Commissioners, and also the very able staff from BDS and BPS. I don't think we would be able to accomplish as much as we did over the past year without their very able assistance, and we appreciate that full staffing has come in definitely handy in the past year. So, before I get into the meat of the, I also wanted to introduce, obviously, Paul Salamano, who's the Vice Chair. We'll be kind of alternating as we kind of work through the presentation today. The very first thing I'd like to talk about today is the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. It's very apropos that we're talking about that because it was signed into law in October 1966, 50 years ago. And even at a time, just to kind of provide a little bit of context, you know, where they were in the midst of one of the most significant periods of upheaval that a country could possibly imagine at the time. The day before President Johnson signed the bill into law, the US sent 174 planes to bomb North Vietnam, and the Black Panthers had actually formed. So we're in the heart of a period of dramatic change culturally, socially, and economically. And I think we find ourselves kind of in the midst of a very similar situation as we are making this presentation today. But one of the things that distinguished the act, and I think we have a lot to learn from, is that it reflected a broad coalition of groups: rural, urban, low economic status, high economic status. It was Republican and Democrats kind of coming together around a very central issue and coming to an agreement that something needed to be done amidst a period of dramatic change. And it even preceded the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969 by three years. So it was even prioritized ahead of more sweeping, broader environmental regulations being put into place. And so, coming around to our priorities and goals, we've set out a number of different issues and recommendations from the Commission that I think will guide our discussion today. They include revisiting the Goal Five rule-making process, as well as the owner consent law, and some of the legislative priorities we'd like to discuss today. The role of historic districts, and the type of design review that is currently being conducted, and how that fits into the larger comprehensive plan that's been considered. Issues surrounding residential neighborhoods in terms of demolition, character equity, and affordability. Significant development pressure on streetcar commercial nodes, seismic retrofits, and then, to sum it up, the issue of sustainability and stewardship moving forward. So, the first issue that we're going to talk about today, and Paul's going to share, is concerning the state's preservation laws and the Goal Five process.
Thanks Kirk. So our first topic is fairly broad statewide. The Department of Land Conservation and Development has started, has initiated changing the Goal Five administrative rules. And they've been meeting for a while now, and the city is currently participating in this rule-change committee. We have a couple of, we have a couple of recommendations for this. First, we want the city to continue support participation and provide testimony for the January 2017 meeting. The second thing we're hoping the city will do is to scrutinize the Goal Five language, specifically for certain language, and reject that language for three pertinent topics. The first is changing the definition of landowner to include easement and leaseholders. The second is rejecting language that allows property owners in historic districts to opt out of regulatory requirements, which basically would allow them to become free riders, reaping all the benefits of living in a historic district without any of the responsibilities. And then, any rule that would exempt national register listing from local protections. The second big statewide topic we have is repeal of the owner consent law. And we ask that this be put on the city's legislative agenda, and we ask that the city seek to repeal ORS 197.772. Repeal of this law will allow the city to more effectively meet its historic preservation goals, and it will basically stop property owners from self-zoning their own property. Kirk?
The second issue concerns issues-
Excuse me, just before you go on-
Sure.
I was checking with the mayor, will you automatically ask your staff to forward those legislative agenda priorities to the government relations vote?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. The second set of issues concerns our historic districts in terms of height, floor ratio, and compatible design. And the principal issues we kind of highlighted in the report are incompatible height allowances in zoning code. I know that the Council has been fairly active in terms of those issues in some of the historic districts, including Grand Avenue, as well as Old Town Chinatown. Those are fairly significant issues in terms of trying to corral parcels that have significant development potential and making them compatible with the existing buildings that surround them. Also, some of the issues that we're concerned about concerning FAR bonuses. So, not only, you know, within the comprehensive plan do we have these height limits, but we also have the potential for FAR bonuses, for instance, with the affordable housing incentives that are being proffered. So, in addition to the high allowances that the zoning code allows, you could consider additional stories being added on top of that. So that was, that's certainly something that we are concerned about. And another thing is the lower level of reviews that's been proposed for housing projects. I know that for some of the proposals, it would, they would be handled principally at the staff level, and we would suggest that we maintain kind of the existing Type 1, 2, 3, 4 levels of review for those projects. Our recommendations include making sure that we just have right zoning, right-sized zoning in historic districts, that we protect the character of the existing historic districts that we do have. And I think that that would help to provide clarity to some of the owners and developers by making sure that we further refine some of the existing design guidelines. Many of our design guidelines for existing districts are fairly old, and the PDC has certainly taken a leadership role in developing the revised guidelines for the Chinatown, Japan Town area. And that will greatly help, I think, in ensuring consistency with the zoning code. Because right now, we do have this kind of difference between, for instance, height, the allowances for height, and then, you know, the issues of trying to make a tall building compatible in a low-rise area. And we also want to make sure that we create some kind of balancing act for the inclusionary housing incentive, so that we don't put pressure on contributing buildings in historic districts.
So our next topic is residential neighborhoods, demolition, character equity, and affordability. So I think this issue is probably pretty well-known to everybody. The large number of demolitions, residential demolitions every year, loss of affordability, erosion of neighborhood character, those elements that make characters, neighborhoods unique and cohesive, and just the wasteful nature of, you know, destroying the housing stock. So, we have a number of recommendations for this. One, we support the retention of existing houses, and doing this by increasing density on those properties through internal conversions and freestanding ADUs.
We did that this morning.
Yes.
Yes.
We're a little off on our time.
I can't say we're sparring.
The other thing is to consider the historic context. So, you know, we think it would be a great idea to develop design standards and guidelines that recognize that our neighborhoods are unique, and that new infill needs to respond appropriately to each neighborhood individually. And the third thing is to support the equitable creation of new historic districts. So, possibly through time or monetary support, help lower-income neighborhoods possibly create historic districts that would give them more control over infill and development in their neighborhoods.
The next issue is development pressure in our streetcar commercial nodes. And some of the issues are shared with the single-family residential zones, in that there's fairly significant pressure to put in incompatible new development. These streetcar commercial nodes tend to be two- to three-story buildings, and they represent some of the major destinations for streetcars from the late 19th and early 20th centuries. And there's been a number of issues that have risen up, particularly on Belmont, Division, Hawthorne, a lot of those main kind of corridors used by streetcars that has bring this issue to the fore. And one of the other issues that comes up inevitably is the lack of recognition that these historic streetscapes retain integrity and have community value. So it kind of brings us around to having a revised HRI, so that we can better understand what are the most significant concentrations of these commercial, historic commercial storefronts, and we need to figure that out pretty fast in order to kind of keep ahead of the development pressure and provide incentives for folks to do the right thing. Some of the recommendations we have, obviously, to provide some protections in these areas, either by revisiting some of the design standards for new construction, and also trying to encourage rehabilitation through incentives, perhaps by lobbying the state to have some kind of statewide rehabilitation tax credit that could be coupled with the rehabilitation tax credit for, that the feds currently offer. Another one would be to encourage the use of the Oregon Main Street program. I think St. John's is one of the neighborhoods, the only neighborhood in Portland that is currently a Main Street community, and I think that's, would be a significant shot in the arm in terms of developing more commercial interest in these older areas again. And then lastly, supporting the creation of historic districts in these commercial strips in order to conserve the existing building stock that we do have.
So our last issue is seismic retrofit project for unreinforced masonry buildings. So this one's actually fairly straightforward in terms of an issue, much more difficult in terms of a solution. Basically, the requirements for seismic retrofit for historic structures requires a significant investment, and there just are not the financial incentives to offset the costs for property owners. So, in our report, we have, there's actually quite a few recommendations, but I'm just going to touch on a few of the principal ones. So one is regulatory flexibility. So, flexibility for designated historic structures to find alternatives, alternative or creative ways to retrofit that preserves the structure and possibly keeps costs low. Another option, another recommendation would be to lobby for state incentive, specifically a rehabilitation tax credit to assist owners in designating and retrofitting their unreinforced masonry buildings. And a third would be to pursue FEMA funding for pre-disaster mitigation. FEMA has funds, or had funds available, if they're still around, they may have funds available for dealing specifically with planning to deal with historic structures prior to disasters. Thanks.
And the last component for the issues section is the general undervaluing, undervaluing of the economic, social, and environmental benefits of historic preservation. And that's perhaps the most challenging aspect for Council to consider, is to appropriately fund initiatives such as a new HRI for the city, because I think that's really the foundation for decision-making when it comes to planning and to also developing a more thoroughgoing program to conserve the city's resources. You can't really know what to preserve until you know what you have, and that's the main reason why we think that the HRI is, in general, one of the critical things to kind of kick this off. But also, for every dollar that's spent on historic preservation activities, whether it's inventorying or rehabilitation, there's fairly significant multiplier effects, economic multiplier effects, that from studies in other states have generally come to a consensus that it ranges, for every dollar spent, you get $13 of economic activity out of it. And so there's a fairly significant amount of opportunity cost that we forego when we start demolishing a lot of the historic fabric of the city, and we fail to kind of avail ourselves of the potential benefits that they offer from a tourism perspective, from an affordable housing perspective, and from a number of other issues. And so our recommendations are really to, you know, for the city to take back a little bit more of a leadership role in terms of the planning for the future of our historic legacy, and to really come to value preservation as a sustainability tool. Because, again, the amount of landfill waste that comes from the demolition of historic buildings is considerable, and it increases costs for having to manage those landfills into the future. And then to also be prepared for the next big earthquake. Pre-disaster planning is critical. Very oftentimes, decisions are being made following an earthquake that can lead to the unnecessary demolition of some of the historic buildings. We've seen it in several other instances, Katrina, San Francisco. But they've also, FEMA has developed a number of processes to encourage people to make better planning decisions in times of crisis such as that. And lastly, the recommendation is to incentivize historic preservation. One of the things that has happened is that very oftentimes, we have a lot of regulatory sticks kind of hitting folks over the head, and not enough incentives, financial incentives, regulatory incentives, to encourage people to go through a process that many view as being onerous. And so we want to create a little bit more of an opportunity for folks to see some of the more direct economic benefits. So I think that's kind of our presentation for today, and so we want to open it up to questions from Council on any of those issues or other things that are of concern. Thank you.
Questions, concerns, this is always a good check-in, so we appreciate being able to do this. I have some things to note for the future myself, but I'll wait till we hear from everybody else and other questions.
When's the last time the historic resource inventory was?
About 36 years ago?
Exactly.
And there's been, right, I think some of that is related to the owner consent issue, is that when you start looking at some of the other communities throughout the states, which is Clagmas or County or Washington County, they haven't updated their HRIs either. As a matter of fact, they haven't nominated any new landmarks since the mid-1990s, I believe. And I think Portland has only done it three or four times. We've largely been protecting resources by listing them in the national register, as opposed to a local landmark process.
Yeah, good.
I appreciate your attention to seismic issues, and you're right, there is a FEMA pre-disaster mitigation pot of money, which sadly is normally around $30 million a year for the whole country. But we've accessed it before, and we'll try to access it again. And I'll also note that the president-elect seems to refer to virtually everything as a disaster, so maybe that's an indication that disaster-related funding will increase dramatically in his administration.
Thank you both very much. Okay, are there other, either Commission members that want to speak, or folks that signed up to talk about this report?
We have several signed up.
Okay.
Jim Hoyer, Fred Leeson, Mary McMurray, please come up, and they'll be followed by Peggy Moretti, John Liu, and Constance Beaumont.
Okay. Good afternoon, and welcome. We'd like to lead off. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Hoyer, and I'm here today representing the Portland Coalition for Historic Resources. We applaud the message provided by the Landmarks Commission, and we strongly support their concerns and recommendations. We also want to commend them for their vigor in pursuing their responsibility for advising the city council and city bureaus on matters of historic preservation. We'd also like to second the comments that were in their written document about the work of Brandon Spencer-Hardle, who has sit the ground running as BPS Historic Preservation Planner. Now, some comments that we have on this whole subject. Notably, the Commission's recommendation for updating the historic resources inventory has been repeated this year for what I believe is the eighth time in eight years. Little has been done by the city to fulfill its duty to update the HRI, and the fig leaf covering this extended period of neglect of inventory has been the confusion surrounding the owner consent law and the language in the state's Goal Five rules, which provide jurisdictions authority to provide such inventories. The inventory is important, for reasons as Commissioner Renzetta just pointed out, in part because Portland is an old city. We do not like to admit this, but the percentage of our buildings constructed prior to 1920 is greater than that of Philadelphia. So this is a completely different city from Phoenix, or Houston, or even Atlanta. If we are to continue to grow without destroying, which makes Portland a great livable and, yes, beautiful city, we will need to have a much clearer and more comprehensive understanding of what is important to be preserved and what is not. The Commission's report mentioned the ongoing revisions to the Goal Five rules, and as a member of the Regulatory Advisory Committee working on those revisions, one of my personal objectives in our discussions has been to bring clarity to the Goal Five rules, to strip away that fig leaf of confusion that has stymied Portland action on its inventory. I believe that the RAC's proposed new language will provide a degree of clarity that can allow all jurisdictions in the state to inventory and designate historic resources. I would urge the city leadership to become engaged in the process when the Land Conservation and Development Commission meets in January, consider these new rules. Mr. Spencer-Hardle, as you've heard, is also a member of the RAC, and I expect he will be providing your staff's guidance on how you can help move the LCDC in the right direction. Finally, one area not touched on by the Commission's report is the state-of-the-administration in Portland's protections for historic resources through Historic Resource Review by the Bureau of Development Services. It's been several years now since this Council adopted the Historic Resources Code Improvement Project Recommendations. Lessons have been learned about how HRCIP works, but BDS has often struggled with achieving predictability and consistency in their rulings. Partly, that problem is the result of the obsolescence of most of the historic review guidelines, and especially the vagueness of the fallback guidelines applied in the Irvington Historic District, for which there is no specific historic design review guideline. With several neighborhoods currently exploring national register historic district designations, and with the prospect that the Goal Five rule changes may make locally-designated historic conservation districts practical again after some 20-odd years, we need another review of the Historic Resource Review process, coupled with new thinking on how to update and expand our historic design guidelines. The Portland Coalition for Historic Resources will be working with BDS, BPS, and Landmarks Commission on this subject as one of its highest priorities in 2017, and we hope that we will be able to bring you some proposals towards the end of the year.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Hoyer, thank you so much for your diligence. I agree, it has been eight times in a row that I've been here, we've asked for this. In fairness, we've had six cut budgets, so it's hard to-
Yes.
... provide more things when we're just deciding what to cut. I just wanted to thank you, as I did this morning, for your input on the residential infill project.
Appreciate the recognition.
Your analysis, you put a lot of time into it, and I think we adopted many of your suggestions, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leeson.
Good afternoon. Fred Leeson, speaking on behalf of the Bosco-Milligan Foundation and our Architectural Heritage Center that we own and operate. This is really a magnificent report, and I want to congratulate everybody that had a piece in writing it. It's more comprehensive than the brief display that you saw here. I think it touches every significant issue that the preservation community faces in a very thoughtful and insightful way, and better yet, it offers a lot of recommendations of how to move forward, so I appreciate that deeply. I would die to go to heaven if you could approve all the recommendations and adopt them and impose them and make them come to pass. I have a hunch I won't live that long. But I do believe, you know, this race is a marathon, not a sprint, and we know that, and we're in it for the marathon. The Architectural Heritage Center's advocacy committee and our board, some months ago, earlier this year, had kind of set our own priorities for 2016, and I was pleased that every one of them showed up in the report. The ones that kind of topped our list were advocating the state-level changes for the owner consent. We would love to see the state do incentives for commercial, for historic commercial buildings. We realize these things will take time to happen, but we encourage the city to join us in that legislative effort. We, historic resource inventory, you've heard a lot about, we support that, would love to see that happen. Since that was done, we've added a lot to the city since the 1980s, so a lot of the East Portland neighborhoods have never, ever been surveyed. Finding incentives for unreinforced masonry buildings, extremely difficult, we see that as very important. And design guidelines to protect historic districts. These are all issues that we firmly believe in and hope that there will be some progress down the road. Thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome.
Hi, I'm Mary McMurray, and I brought a little photo to refresh the memory for anyone who may not remember the Jansen Beach Carousel. This photo was taken in 2007, and it shows a very satisfied rider on the carousel when it was still open to the public. We've been missing the many benefits that the carousel brought to our community since the Edens Corporation bought the property several years ago and removed the carousel from the historic resources list. This is a glaring example of why an historic resource in our city needs stronger protection. Although many people and local organizations have tried to contact the Edens Corporation about the missing carousel, all of their efforts have been stonewalled with no response from Edens. This is unacceptable. At a time when Portland as a whole is losing our shared community resources to the wrecking ball, bowling alleys, for example, interstate lanes, historic established restaurants, and many buildings of historic value, we must not sit idly by and allow the theft of the carousel to go unopposed. As a beautiful and participatory work of art, a healthy alternative to consumer-dependent and digitized entertainment, and an embodiment of democratic ideals, which I could go into at length, but won't right now, and not least, as a potentially lucrative investment for our region. For example, the city of Salem, Riverfront Park, Carousel is really an asset to the community. I urge the city council to create a commission to investigate the potential of bringing the carousel back to the generations of citizens who love it. Perhaps with a united front composed with support from the city, the Regional Arts and Council Culture, Council, Restore Oregon, and the Architectural Heritage Center, and the more than 400 members of the Facebook group Save the Jansen Beach Carousel, we can succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up again. I remember in my first term that either Mayor Adams or Commissioner Fisher, who was in charge of parks, had located it. I think we looked into it, so we'll look into it again. I also noticed in the report that apparently, well, I knew this actually, parks has a whole warehouse full of cobblestones, which we're waiting for people to want to take from recycling, so we will look into that again, and just thank you very much for being here.
Thank you all. Okay, you have some more?
Next three, please. Peggy Moretti, John Liu, and Constance Beaumont. They'll be followed by Sarah Stevenson, Karen Carlson, and Rick Michelson.
Okay, how many more do you have after that? Okay, good, manageable. Good afternoon, welcome. I think you may be on first, Peggy.
All right. Good afternoon, and I just want to quickly say thank you, Mayor Hales, for elevating the conversation about historic resources during your tenure. We really appreciate it. I am here, Peggy Moretti, representing Restore Oregon. I'm here to enthusiastically endorse the State of the City Preservation Report submitted by the Landmarks Commission. And rather than restate the points of the report, I'm just going to simply ask that you take them really seriously and act on them. Taking stock of managing, protecting, and actively incentivizing the adaptive reuse of the irreplaceable historic fabric of the city is not something to be brushed aside, because it's the historic homes, neighborhoods, churches, theaters, schools, fire stations, and storefronts that make Portland Portland, and not Anyplace else USA. It's what makes us so grateful to return home to Portland when we've visited some other city that lacks the sense of place and community that we tend to take for granted. Our historic buildings represent perhaps the largest cash or renewable energy that we have, but more than this, our historic buildings and districts are enormous economic assets. assets, as the report points out. This rich and authentic character is what attracts new businesses, jobs, and tourists. Where do companies moving to Portland want to locate? In the converted old warehouse. Where do people want to go out to dinner? That quirky old pub that used to be a fire station. Where do they want to shop? That boutique that used to be a garage. If we lose our historic places, we don't just lose our heritage, we lose a huge economic advantage. Portland's unique older neighborhoods and streetcar commercial corridors are under greater threat today than at any time in 50 years. So, in addition to echoing Landmarks' call for a better rip-sack proposal in updating our historic inventory, I urge the city to play a leadership role in state legislation that would throw some urgently needed weight in the scale on the side of preservation. I urge that the city's legislative agenda include two things. First, fix Oregon's broken historic designation process, as we were just talking about, the GOAL V, the owner consent, so that local jurisdictions actually have a say in what happens to historic properties like the Workman Temple and the Lotus Cafe, and the cultural and economic benefits that those places bring to the communities. We are the only state in the Union for which the process of historic designation is completely one-sided, and that is very bad policy. Restore Oregon pledges to work alongside of you in the halls of Salem to lobby on behalf of that effort. Two, please introduce legislation for a seismic retrofitting incentive. We've had a lot of calls, and continue to call, for a state historic rehabilitation tax credit. We know that's going to be a really heavy lift in the current budget climate in Salem. But there is a proposal called Legislative Concept 1984 that may be our best short-term bet here for creating meaningful new economic incentives for restoration and reuse of historic buildings. And that would be addressing the seismic retrofitting expense, and I have been serving on that Citizens Committee, so I understand the dilemma we face there. But we can't move that forward, and it would be hypocritical to, you know, haul out our comp plan and all the policies to talk about historic preservation, but not bring forward any economic tools to bring that to fruition. So, if we want to mandate seismic upgrades, we're going to have to create financial tools, and I think this legislative concept has some legs under it that we really need to get behind and support. Without it, I don't think we can move that forward. And I just want to close by saying, obviously, what we do in this next year or two here is going to determine what Portland looks like and feels like for generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is John Liu. So, we're in the midst of a time of great change in Portland, and that's a wonderful thing. The energy and optimism in this city is palpable, and it is exhilarating. In the midst of all this, the Landmarks Commission and the staff that support them perform a very critical task. They help guide the development of Portland in a thoughtful manner that preserves the livability and the unique beauty of our city and its heritage. So, one thing I would ask the council to do is to consider supporting the Landmarks Commission and the staff in developing neighborhood guidelines, which will further direct that development in the most productive and forward-thinking way. And I would like to make a proposal, which is that in the historic districts that the city has, and in some that are perhaps in the process of formation, there's a tremendous amount of energy, expertise, and resources, both in time and financially. I would suggest that the staff could harness that private energy to produce guidelines that would serve not only those particular neighborhoods, but other neighborhoods who, on their own, might not have the resources to perform that task. I think that would be a win-win, it would be a public-private partnership, and it would serve our less resourced neighborhoods very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Great, thank you. My name is Constance Beaumont, and just a personal note, before I came to Portland in 2003, I worked with the National Trust for Historic Preservation for a number of years, and in that capacity, had the opportunity to work with cities and states around the country, so bring that background to my comments here. I endorse the Landmarks Commission's recommendations in its State of the City Report. I agree with the earlier comments made, I think it's an excellent report. In particular, I hope the council will seek repeal of the state's owner consent law, which effectively gives people the option of opting out of public laws they don't like. Property owners are not allowed to veto determinations that scenic or natural resources are so significant that they warrant protection. They should not be allowed to do so in the case of historic resources. So, all of the GOAL V resources, scenic, natural, and historic, should be treated alike. Thanks to the owner consent law, cities in Oregon also lack an option that cities in most other states enjoy. I'm referring to conservation districts, which allow cities elsewhere to ensure that new homes in historic areas are compatible with older ones. But the conservation district regulations are often less restrictive than those governing historic districts, sort of preservation light, if you will. Portland needs to bring, and Oregon needs to bring back the conservation district option by getting rid of the owner consent law. My last point, given the conversation this morning about the residential infill proposal and demolitions generally, I agree that Portland needs more higher-density development, but it should be well-located and better-designed, higher-density. There are exceptions, but much of Portland's new development is generic, nondescript, and often jarringly incompatible with what's around it. I'm convinced there would be less pushback against higher-density if the city and the development community could devise strategies for encouraging better-designed new buildings, buildings that people will want to protect 50 or 100 years from now. Last comment, I'd like to thank you. Can't be easy to listen to all of us for day after day, but I appreciate your good efforts.
There's some things that are easier to listen to, others. This is on the easy side. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right.
Then we do have just three more. Sarah Stevenson, Karen Carlson, and Rick Michelson.
Okay, come on up.
Good afternoon. Shall I just get started? All right. So, I'm here in three capacities.
Put your name on the record.
My name is Sarah Stevenson. I'm here in my own capacity, as a Portlander, as the Executive Director of Innovative Housing, and also as co-chair of the Old Town Chinatown Community Association's Land Use and Design Review Committee. In all of those capacities, I thank and support the Landmarks Commission for their service to our city and their stewardship of our city's historic resources. I agree and support with their report and everything in it. Starting with Old Town Chinatown, as you know, we straddle two historic districts that help define our neighborhood and make it a truly special place. As a community, we rely very heavily on Landmark Commission's expertise, advocacy, and protection of those districts. As individuals, we just don't have the skills or expertise to respond to the development proposals that come in front of us, and we look to Landmarks to help protect the neighborhood and the aesthetics and the historic resources that are there. And we're very grateful that the Skidmore Design Guidelines were updated this year, and we're very appreciative of the work that's gone in to develop the guidelines for New Chinatown, Japan Town. That district is facing a lot of development pressure right now, and those guidelines are more important than ever. We've seen the effects of development pressure on other historic buildings throughout the city. We're concerned that the comp plan, zoning changes, mandatory seismic code changes could further challenge the historic districts and historic buildings, much as you've already heard, making this preservation work that much more critical. As a developer of affordable housing, we've completed several historic building renovations, and we think historic preservation and affordable housing are a great combination. We personally have found the commission very good to work with on all of our projects. They've been flexible with existing conditions, they've made good suggestions for phasing in different elements, and they've maintained an efficient and transparent process. In our experience, they are achieving the city's goals around preservation while also understanding and supporting development. Finally, as a third-generation Portlander who's raising a fourth generation here, I believe it's incumbent upon us to honor and protect our history as we move forward. I appreciate all the time, energy, skill, and commitment that the volunteers on the Landmarks Commission bring to that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Who'd like to be first between the two of you? That's the right choice.
Hello. Good afternoon, I'm Karen Carlson, not the Karen Carlson who's the Landmarks Commissioner, just so you know. There we go. So, I'm here today to talk specifically about a project that's been listed many, many, many years as an endangered project. This is the Morris Marx House. You can see a photo of it here. But before I start, I want to thank a couple of people. Thank you, Mayor Hales, and particularly Rachel Wiggins in your office for everything that she has done to help move this project forward, and thank you, Commissioner Fritz, for you and Zalane in Parks. Without that, we wouldn't have a site to bring this house to. People have been trying to save and move this wonderful building for a really long time. Rick will let you know that he started in 1980-something on this. There's a lot of things that need to be done to get this house moved. It has to move from 12th Avenue down through Portland State University over I-205 to its lovely new destination at the intersection of Broadway, Broadway Drive, and Grant. There's a huge list of things that we're working on that need to be done. We have at least six permits. We have a number of land use issues. We have several bureau requirements. We have coordination with multiple agencies, including ODOT and the utility companies, and we have a big chunk of money for SDC fees. And yesterday, we finally heard from PSU. They are crucial in the house move, since it has to go through their campus, and they have a number of conditions for us, and that amount to the tune of $124,000. That was a bit of a bomb that was dropped on us, but let me say that we have not given up. I'm going to let Rick talk about what he will commit to this project to make it happen and what we need from you and others.
Thank you. I'm Rick Michelson. As Karen said, we've had a number of unexpected expenses. We're now at a position where the budget for this process, this project, is about $1.4 million, and while the house is priceless to the community, its market value is only about $900,000. So, we need to work to cut that gap and fill it. We're looking at the obvious things first, cutting the scope of work, cutting the budget, asking for SDC waivers, because the house exists and it's going there, simplifying the permit process a little bit. We're also talking about cutting the house into pieces, to see if we can reduce the impact on PSU and make it less, need fewer trees for replacement for the house. But that's not going to get there. We're going to have a gap of about $500,000 that I'm looking to the public and us to provide, and I'm here today to commit that even though we're having to pay $160,000 for the land, we will lease it to this project for a dollar a year, for 10 years. That gets our project down. I'm also here to commit to donating $150,000 to the Bosco Milligan Foundation on behalf of this project, so that there can be some additional funds that come into it. And I'd also like this to kick off a fundraising drive for this, to fill the rest of the gap. We think we have to spend another two or three months spending money before we know whether the project can go ahead. I want to make it happen. I will devote every effort to make it happen, but I can't do it alone. Thank you.
You've done a lot. Thank you.
This is a 136-year-old house.
Yeah, yeah, it's a treasure. Thank you very much. Questions? Thank you all. And is there anyone else signed up, anyone else to speak? Then, is there a motion to accept the Landmarks Commission's report?
I'll move. Second?
Roll call, please.
Thank you very, very much for all of your work on historic preservation and on this report in particular, and thank you very much for those of you who are working and making contributions to protect our historic resources. Aye.
Well, this is the occasion every year where I talk about having been married in a church that was built before William the Conqueror invaded England from Normandy in 1066, and, you know, I would really hope that the Morris Marx House is going to be there in another millennium, because of the care that people have given it, and because we are going to try to, we are going to find solutions. We've come way too far. Thank you very much for the Landmarks Commission, both for this wonderful report. It seems like each year, there's more pictures in it, which makes it much more understandable and relates to the beautiful language in it as well. And I'm very proud of some of the things we have got done this year, particularly the Skidmore Design Guidelines, which, again, you know, there's a lot of things that are happening in December that we're all working on getting our projects finished, and although I haven't got this particular one finished, I know that whoever has transportation in the next administration, whoever's mayor, well, we know who the mayor is, will all be continuing to work on these projects and just keep asking about the historic resources inventory. It looks like we're going to be making 5% cuts again this year, which is discouraging, and still, we may be able to find ways to get things done. So, thank you, everybody who participates. It's going to take all of us. Aye.
Well, thank you, Landmarks Commission, for another outstanding report, and again, thank you for all the hard work you do. It's not easy, especially considering that many of the challenges you lay down for us are ones we've all heard before, and we're all kind of wringing our hands, why we can't get an updated resource inventory, why we can't fix the owner consent issue, and why we can't get the Morris Marx House moved on a more economical basis. But I do appreciate the fact that we are saving Morris Marx House. I had a chance to tour it many, many years ago, and it's a real gem. So, thank you for all your work in protecting all the gems in our city, and appreciate it. Aye.
Well, I have a number of comments, but first, I just want to second the point that was made about just how dynamic a time this is. You know, there's some really powerful winds of change that are blowing through our city, if I can use the next couple of days' weather as a starting point. And those winds threaten to sweep away a lot of what's not bolted down, and that's why this work is so important, and why I so appreciate the Landmarks Commission and our excellent staff, now augmented excellently. And it's going to be really necessary to have this kind of advocacy coming out of the community, people willing to serve on the commission, and a city government working in concert with all those folks to preserve more of what we love about the city. We are a city with a lot of historic buildings in it. There are houses, there are office buildings, there are all kinds of uses and structures, and there's a lot of work to do to save them. We've done some good things. I really appreciate the fact that we worked as a community to weigh in on that Lake Oswego case, got an important decision that really leads up to going to the legislature and changing that owner consent law. I'm proud of the fact that we now require deconstruction of 100-year-old houses, but I'm going to rely on this community and this council to ratchet that down to 80 and 60 as fast as possible, so that we send one more signal, in addition to the ones that we sent this morning in tuning our infill regulations, that we really, really don't want you to tear down that great old house. We want you to save it. We want you to reuse it as the structure that it is on the outside, but perhaps with an accessory dwelling unit in the attic. Figure out a creative way to use that old structure well for the next 100 years. But if you're absolutely going to remove it, then please take it apart piece by piece so those great pieces can be reused, and that's the last resort, and I hope it doesn't happen very often, but we should not just restrict that benefit to 100-year-old buildings. We have some things to celebrate in addition to these policy issues. There's some great projects underway. As police commissioner, I spent more time than I'd care to remember in the middle of the night in the entertainment district, and one of the problem spots was a bar called The Crown Room, which is now gone, and of course, the great building that it was located in with plywood on the upper-story windows is now undergoing renovation. The Akerbach House in the King Neighborhood was saved by an amazing action at the community level. Bing Sheldon would be very proud of Sierra's design for the world mark in Old Town that's going to reuse cast iron from structures that were demolished or taken apart in the 1950s. And then Brad Mawson and Beam Development are taking the old Schleifer Furniture Building and bringing it back to life and scraping the paint off the windows that's been there for who knows how long on the upper floors. So, there's some good things happening, and we rely on private property owners with, in some cases, help and incentives from the city to do the right thing, but it's even more wonderful when they manage to do it without our help. Yes, I'm very proud of the Skidmore Old Town Historic District Guidelines, and that's a good, another good piece of work by the city. Finally, the Morris Marx House. Rachel Wiggins is an amazing woman, and she's served our city very well as a member of my staff. She's done all kinds of things, which include keeping the city council on track, no small feat, managing our new process for special appropriations. Talk about herding cats, she pulled that off, and she has labored passionately with the rest of this team on getting the Morris Marx House saved. I'm really glad that's going to happen. It's maybe going to happen, it's going to happen, and I appreciate the commitment of this council and this community to do that, and no one more, Rick, than you and Karen, that you have really put a lot of effort into this, and you deserve our partnership and thanks to get the rest of the job done. So, both as mayor for the next few weeks and as private citizen, I'll continue to be part of that team, and I look forward to seeing that house come to life again in its new location. So, great work. This report is always, as a couple of us said, a high point in the council's deliberations, so there are hard parts and easy parts to this job. This is an easy part, but there's hard work that this whole agenda entails, and I appreciate all of your your commitment to it. This is a great old city, and thank you for helping keep it that way. Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. We will take a breath and move on into the rest of our agenda.
Is that what you're doing next? Doing 1367?
Yeah, yeah, the LPA. All right, Sue, would you like to read 1367 for us?
1367.
Let's, let's take a break for a moment, let the, let the chambers resort, and then we'll read 1367.
This next item is important, but I hope that we keep things moving along.
Yeah, I think we should.
We got a point, and I make it.
We're very kind.
Thank you for your good work.
Hey.
Until January.
Okay. No kind words after that, huh? Here, you going to make a run downstairs? I'll take one. Thank you. Proceed.
Item 1367, adopt the locally preferred alternative for the Powell Division Transit and Development Project and conditions for approval.
Commissioner Novick.
Good afternoon, colleagues. We're here today at an important milestone for the Powell Division Transit and Development Project. Council is being asked to adopt the project's locally preferred alternative, also known as the LPA, to affirm the recommended route and station locations for what will be the region's first rapid, bus rapid transit project connecting downtown Portland with Gresham Transit Center. The council has heard about this project a few times, and most recently in July, we adopted the Portland Local Action Plan, a companion plan to the project that focuses on land use concepts and community development actions for the Powell Division Corridor in the city of Portland. The city is already taking some steps to advance the action items in the plan and working, and working with community leaders. Staff has developed conditions of approval to the LPA that we're going to be asked to adopt today as amendments to the LPA. And Gene, Senator Hall-Biggs, will take us through the specifics. These conditions describe a number of key commitments by the city, TRIMET and Metro to advance action to the Portland Local Action Plan around housing, construction mitigation to support businesses, transit service in the corridor as the project advances. I think while your testimony today, they'll be asking us to implement these actions sooner rather than later, and make funding those actions a priority for the council. Before we begin, there's a couple of members of the project steering committee here today. I want to extend my thanks to them for participating in the decision-making for the project. It was a long process to get here. Thank you for your service. I think Ken Marks and Lori Boyson are among the committee members that are here today. This project is about more than transit. It's about transit and housing and jobs and education and place-making and people and how they all intersect. PBOT will be coming back at least two more times to seek council approval for the project. I'll ask the council to continue to hold the project, city bureaus, Metro and TRIMET accountable for the commitments we're making as the project moves forward. They're important to the community and the success of the project. This will require that the council fund the actions. PDC will be making a general fund request to support the business technical assistance programs and begin their efforts early on in the project so those businesses are prepared for construction and the arrival of BRT. Please give that request serious consideration. Staff worked very hard to bring this proposal forward. Thank you all for your efforts. I look forward to seeing this new service open in 2021. And I think now I'm turning it over to Gene.
Good afternoon. Bring up, bring up your resource people there, Gene.
I am. They're my resource people. I'm sitting in the middle. Sorry. Good afternoon. I'm Gene Senna Shalbigs. I'm a project manager with the Portland Bureau of Transportation. Joining me here today is Leah Treet, our director, and councillor Bob Stacy from the Metro Council. I'm going to have them say a few things first, and then I'll go through the presentation.
Thanks, Gene. Your Honor, members of the council, Commissioners Bob Stacy, Metro Councillor for District Six, that's southwest and southeast Portland, more or less. I'm pleased to be here today. The clerk is providing you with a letter from me and my co-chair of the Steering Committee for the Powell, for the Division Transit Project, Councillor Shirley Craddock, thanking the city for your engagement in this process and urging your support for this locally preferred alternative decision. We faced great needs in the southeast corridor, from we began what was then called the Powell Division Rapid Transit Project or High Capacity Transit Project. A lack of really strong transit service to match the very strong demand that filled the buses more than they had seats for, more than they had room to stand in the aisles at rush hour. A need for access to that transit line in the form of better sidewalks, accessible crossings and safe crossings, and better shelters and stations for people to wait for the bus, as well as more frequent service and quicker service. To the extent that was possible with the modest resources provided by a small start's federal grant and the matching resources that we're still putting together from local partners, from TRIMET and from the region, we have gone a long way toward meeting some of those very clear needs for better access. We also, I think along the way, discovered something about our community, about the strength of the, the folks who are served by this, this line and this investment, the strength of their opinions, the strength of their advocacy, their willingness to step forward and help lead a project like this. Some of the things that, with their help, we've accomplished are improved stations. They're a bit farther apart to enable the bus to make better progress. The level boarding at those stations through three doors so that we can get on and off the buses more quickly. Many more seats and much more space on a 60-foot articulated, longer bus than on a standard coach, with the same level of frequent service in the morning and all day long that's been enjoyed on the Division Line, but with this greater capacity and perhaps more service in the future. We've also provided for improved stations with more amenities for the passengers, as well as more shelter from the elements. And we expect with signal priority to provide a much quicker journey through both outer and inner Division. We're doing all this because the thousands of people who ride on the Division Line today deserve and now will get a much better transit experience. But we're also doing it because of those other community values that are served by a transit investment. This city has provided very important leadership for this project, beginning, of course, with Commissioner Novick and with Director Treet, who has served with the Commissioner on the Steering Committee, extending to the staff of PBOT for sure, but also the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, Housing, PDC, all of whom joined together to assist this council in developing with the community and adopting the Portland Action Plan, which speaks to how this city and its investments can further the employment ambitions, the effort to avoid displacement from, from new development that could be encouraged by this transit investment to ensure more housing affordability along the corridor, east and inner, east side Portland. I think along the way, in addition to doing a very good job of meeting the needs we can with this level of investment, at least from Metro's perspective, we've set a new standard for civic engagement and community involvement in decision-making. It's not simply that we've had a process that engaged people in their own languages with printed material in four different languages, with culturally sensitive and specific engagement through workshops that were oriented to communities of color and immigrant communities in east Portland, but also because the Steering Committee itself engaged not only the usual suspects, government, but also representatives of community groups all along the corridor. It was those representatives of community groups that kept it very real. Platitudes or generalities about how this would work were not satisfactory for people who wanted to understand how it would affect their community, how it would affect the interests they were there to represent, how it would ensure to the best possible extent that we improve east Portland and the entire alignment, rather than simply pass through it. And I think to the extent we've achieved success, it's in large part because we not only listened, but we gave a vote to those folks. And I expect that to be the standard going forward when Metro, at least, is involved in a decision of this magnitude, to ensure that we're not simply seeking to represent because we were elected, but to seek to engage those who will be served by a project to ensure that it's the best possible outcome. It's not the best outcome. I'll be the first to acknowledge that it would be great to have a separate lane on Powell Boulevard going under the, under the railroad tracks. It would be terrific to have true gold standard bus rapid transit. That or light rail will come at a different time in the southeast corridor. My own personal favorite is that we keep Powell Boulevard as a light rail corridor for future development. I don't have the authority to make that determination, but that's what I'm going to be voting for in the future. Another thing that I've recognized from this process, and I know you all fully recognize, is that we do not have the resources in our region and in our communities to do what needs to be done to move the people who are seeking to move today in a way that's sustainable, nor do we have anything like the resources to make it possible to provide access, accessibility and, and movement for the larger numbers that we expect in the future. This is a darn good start. I commend you, I commend it to your attention and urge your approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but I know your capable staff will do a better job than I.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Stacy. And good afternoon. I am Leah Treet, the Director of the Portland Bureau of Transportation. And as the councillor mentioned, I have been serving as Commissioner Novick's delegate on this Steering Committee for the past three years, I believe. So this project is really about making transit better on Division Street. Line four riders are often passed up. Buses are almost always full, and they're delayed in significant congestion along the corridor. So this project that we're voting on today presents an opportunity for us to improve access to jobs, access to educational opportunities at the Portland Community College Campus in southeast, connections to OHSU and connections to Portland State University. As Councillor Stacy mentioned, throughout this planning process, we have heard from the community extensively about the project and the proposed elements. And what we've heard the most is that it's very important for this project to benefit the people who live and work in the corridor, and we are very intentional in our efforts to respond to those calls. You're going to hear more today about actions by our partners that are going to complement the new BRT line with affordable housing investments, technical assistance for businesses that are going to be impacted by the project, and improved transit service to connect with the new BRT line. I want to say thank you to our agency partners at Metro, at TRIMET, the city of Gresham, Multnomah County, and ODOT, who worked with us alongside city staff and our community members in developing the project. And special thanks to PBOT's partners at the Portland Housing Bureau, the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, and the Portland Development Commission, who came along with us on this transit project and helped us take a much more holistic approach to the local preferred alternative that we're presenting to you today. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Gene to jump into more details, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Okay. So I already introduced myself. A little bit about the action that you're taking today. We're going to be talking about what we call a locally preferred alternative for the project, the conditions of approval, which are some of the actions that Leah and Bob mentioned earlier with our partner agencies, what we're calling a corridor-wide strategy. That's sort of a coordinated set of actions by the project partners, looking at the corridor as a whole and sort of coordinated investments. And then you're specifically directing the city bureaus to take actions and requesting some similar sorts of actions from TRIMET and Metro. I'm going to do a high-level overview of this, and I know you're already behind schedule today, so I'm going to try to keep the pace up. We were last here in July, and we presented the local action plan to you. There were a number of community priorities in that plan towards affordable housing and economic development. And as we continued forward, sort of to where we are here today, the community really continued to press us to advance those actions. So we have some news and updates on some of those here. I'll talk about them a little later. So Division Transit. The Line Four Division is one of the most frequent and high ridership bus lines in the TRIMET system. I think Leah and Bob mentioned earlier, it also receives some of the highest complaints in the system for people who are passed up and being, and having full buses due to overcrowding. TRIMET continually makes adjustments to the schedule to try to relieve that, but the traffic conditions are so variable, and the, the schedule just can't compensate sort of when and where that congestion occurs. One thing, nearly all the eastbound evening commute trips are late at least once a week, and more than half of them are overcrowded. And then there's sort of the last piece, people often talk about bus bunching on the Line Four Division. That's where one bus gets delayed just from having to make frequent or lengthy stops, and then that allows the bus behind to catch up. So where you see that leading bus crowded and the bus right behind is empty. Those are some of the, sort of the needs out there on Division Street that we're hoping to resolve. Simply adding more buses won't improve service. That's what's really led us to looking at this new rapid bus service. We are talking about, TRIMET's looking to invest in new articulated buses. These are not the buses from 20 years ago. For those of you that remember, there, there's new technology. They're much better. We're also looking at having amenities and weather protection at each station to really improve the rider experience. I think Bob had alluded to the, the stations are, will be spaced further apart, but in this case, at every station, you would find a place that's a nice place to wait. Some of the other improvements we'll be making are sort of physical changes to the streets or changes to the traffic signal system to help the bus move through traffic. You know, BRT, it's not a prescriptive approach. There's really sort of a range of tools that we can use, things like larger buses with all door boarding and dedicated travel lanes, transit signal priority. That's where the buses and the traffic signals communicate with each other. Wider stop spacing, we talked about, and intersection modifications. So it's really a whole range of tools, and we've found a way to apply them to Division Street. So the locally preferred alternative, this is from our, our project steering committee's last meeting on November 7th. That's when they made their recommendation to approve this LPA. It took three, three years to reach this point. We had a few twists and turns, but we've landed on this alignment. Here's a map, and it's, albeit it's small. You have one in your packet. So the locally preferred alternative calls for bus rapid transit with stations at the locations shown here between downtown Portland and the Gresham Transit Center. The route will operate on the downtown Transit Mall. It'll cross the Willamette River and then run along Division Street from Eighth Avenue all the way out to the Gresham Transit Center. The river crossing is a decision that's still yet to be made. That's why you see sort of two lines crossing the Willamette River. That's showing the Nutelicum Crossing and then the Hawthorne Bridge. There's a preference that's been stated by the Steering Committee to use the telecom just so that we would have access to OHSU and a little bit shorter trip to Portland State University. But the challenge that we have there is with the freight crossing of the Union Pacific tracks and the Max Light Rail tracks at Eighth and Division. TRIMET and PBOT have been working with Union Pacific Railroad to explore some solutions to reduce delay due to, in particular, the freight rail trains that cross through there. to reduce delay due to, in particular, the freight rail trains that cross through there. You know, so we're working towards a solution there. If there's not a solution that allows us to find sort of acceptable delay to get to the telecom crossing, then we would be using the Hawthorne Bridge. So we'll, one of the actions in the resolution is to direct staff to continue that work and come back to you within a year with our findings about which river crossing is the right route. So here's a little bit about the timeline. So we're one of sort of four in the queue to be reviewing and adopting this LPA. The Gresham City Council, they adopted the LPA last night at their hearing. Next week, the LPA will go to the Trimed Board of Directors and the Multnomah County Commission. Once all of the local jurisdictions have approved, the LPA kicks off the next phase of design. And then in early 2017, Trimed will begin that work again, convene a community advisory committee and a policy and budget committee for the project. After all, the local jurisdictions adopt this LPA, then Metro considers it, and that begins a process of amending the regional transportation plan to include the LPA. Metro hands off the lead role for the project to Trimed. And then the process of amending the RTP is expected to conclude in the spring, and that's really based on all of the local jurisdictions adopting the LPA by the end of this year. This is really about sort of the timing and why your decision today is so critical. In order to advance the design beginning in January of next year, we need to have all of the information required to submit our project to the Federal Transit Administration for what they call a project rating through the Small Starts Program. So if we don't begin our design work right away, we won't have all the information necessary to do that. It would end up pushing the project out a year, and as you can see, it's really critical for us in terms of looking ahead. In February 2018, we'd like to see this project in the President's budget. So there's that. I'm going to pause there. Any questions? Okay. Keep going. Okay, great. So we talked earlier, I think both Bob and Leah, we've had some conversation with community around the local action plan, and we've bundled them together into what we call conditions of approval, they're Exhibit C in your packet. These were really, this is really sort of based on this call from the community about specific actions that they wanted to hold us accountable for. And these commitments that I'll describe a little bit here are based on what the bureaus and agencies believe are achievable. But I'm going to sort of pause for a moment and just point out that the commitments here are sort of part of broader goals, and that for the agencies that are implementing these actions, there may be factors that come up that are out of our control, whether it be things like budget resources or properties being available. But again, sort of we've packaged this thinking what we believe is achievable, but at the same time, there may be times when we're coming back to this council and asking for more resources to achieve them. So, I'm going to just give a few highlights. The first sort of areas around community engagement, there'll be, as I mentioned, a community advisory committee for the project, that's something that Trimed will be leading and convening. Trimed also has a business outreach program for the transit project. And then the Portland Housing Bureau in conversation has really agreed to encourage sort of more of a sense of partnership with the community to identify project opportunities and goals, and has been willing to enter into an MOU with those communities to continue sort of that partnership. Around affordable housing, if you remember, we were here in July, you heard from the Housing Bureau Director Kurt Krieger, in the local action plan, we had identified a number of housing units, a target of around 300 housing units in that plan, and we had a gap of about $30 million. And he was here back in July to explain how, based on new housing resources, he felt the ability to be able to fill that gap. In the conditions of approval, there's more specificity about kind of how that commitment will play out in terms of where new housing construction would occur in the corridor, sort of in four key segments. In East Portland, there would be somewhere around 80 to 125 affordable new units. In the J District, there's a project underway at the Old Furniture Store building that will have 47 affordable units. Somewhere in the corridor, within this 20-block stretch around, say, our Chavez Boulevard, there's a project of about 100 to 300 units anticipated. And then in the Clinton Triangle, near the Max Orange Line, there's a project anticipated of about 70 to 120 units. So that's sort of how the new affordable housing commitment is expected to take shape in the corridor so that there's new affordable housing that accesses the transit service itself. And then just another highlight, there's a small rental rehab program that receives a general fund allocation to be able to do rehab on affordable housing units in East So the next category is around economic development and business mitigation. This is Santiago Sanchez from Casa del Sol, he's in the Division Midway Alliance area. So the question is, how do we prepare, you know, business owners like Santiago for the construction that's to come and sort of ensure that those businesses continue to thrive? So this, there's a number of actions here. Trimed plans to work closely with the business owners to plan for construction. They have a solid track record from their previous projects with Max Orange Line Light Rail and Transit Mall and others. PDC and their NPI districts, the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiatives, they provide focused support and services that include business technical assistance and small business loans, district grants and support, district staff, workforce development, and connecting to community anchor institutions. And then this last bullet here, really, I think Steve mentioned this in the beginning with his comments, there'll be a need to seek additional funding to support those services in the NPI districts, and I think you'll even hear more testimony today that this is important. Here's just a map that shows the areas that the NPI serves, that we're really talking about quite a large area. It's beyond, it serves even beyond the specific boundaries of the NPIs, but the Division Corridor really, and through all of East Portland. Other actions, Trimed, through their DBE contracting and local hiring efforts, they've made some commitments there. Career training, a partnership that Trimed is interested in pursuing with Mount Hood Community College and PCC to help people with skills enter Trimed's workforce. And then there's also an interest in hiring a workforce navigator for East Portland to help people connect their skills with jobs. The last area of the conditions of approval are around transit service planning. It's been another focus of our conversations with the community, and I think you'll hear more about this one too today. So Trimed has committed to increasing service in the corridor by reallocating the service hours that are on the Line Four today to other parts of the corridor, that could include new north-south service. You know, for East Portland, where the transit network needs, you know, more routes and more service, this has been one of their most important priorities. And then that last bullet is really about sort of Powell Boulevard will not be forgotten. We had started off this planning process with sort of the inner Powell out to 82nd as a potential route. We moved away from that as a potential route just due to a number of challenges with that as an alignment. Metro has offered to continue to advance Powell Boulevard in the region's high-capacity plan, so there'll be, that will continue to advance as their high-capacity plan gets amended and updated. So sort of the last thing, we've had, even since we put all of this information together, we've had further conversations with the community. There's four proposed amendments that I believe you would have all received. They're sort of highlighted here. One is entering into a signed MOU with the four community groups that we've been meeting with, that would be Opel, Apano, Division Midway Alliance, and EPAP, East Portland Action Plan, thank you. That would really take those conditions of approval and memorialize them even further. That would be a document we'd come back to all of you and present it to you for your approval. Identifying a timeline for the housing strategy, those housing units that I laid out for you. Housing Bureau believes that that can be done within a five-year window, that they either be well under construction or occupied. Really a statement around, the next item is really a statement around the business technical assistance and that being a high priority for the city. And then the last one, really, just sort of to strengthen Trimed's commitment to transit service planning in East Portland. So, okay. That's everything I have for you. So, questions for us?
Just one, it's just a detail provoked by seeing progress on electric buses last weekend at C-40, where they now have buses that can go all day on a single charge, which used to be a problem. When will equipment be selected for this project, assuming it continues in its progress?
I'm going to look to Trimed.
Alan? About two years? Oh, good. That gives them two more years to make them even better. All right, good. Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you very much, Jean and Bob and Leah. This is not a question, I actually just wanted to move the amendments.
So we have a package of four proposed amendments, I think they're copies for public if you want, that deal with the MOU, the housing strategy, business technical assistance, and transit service planning. Commissioner Novick moves those amendments, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion on adopting the amendments before we take testimony? Okay, roll call, please.
Can we take testimony first?
Aye.
We can adopt them and then see.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Obviously, if you think those are bad amendments, let us know, but we think they're non-controversial. Okay, let's call on people for testimony then, please.
I believe, are invited.
Do you have some invited testimony first?
We do.
Okay, please.
We have Chabrie Vickers representing PCC Southeast Campus, Ian Studi representing PSU, Michael Harrison representing OHSU, followed by Lori Boyson of the Division Midway Alliance, Ken Marks of the East Portland Action Plan, and Andre Law, Vice Chair, planning the State Building Commission.
Okay, great, welcome. I think Chabrie, you might be first, or whatever order you'd like to be in.
Good afternoon, my name is Chabrie Vickers, Community Relations Manager at the PCC Southeast Campus. I'm here today on behalf of Dr. Jessica Howard, our campus president and a long-term steering committee member. We appreciate the opportunity to share our support for the locally preferred alternative, and we encourage your yes vote today, thank you for what you've already done. PCC Southeast Campus is part of a vibrant community, distinguished by tremendous cultural richness and a wide range of experiential knowledge and a resilient spirit. Our campus sits at the intersection of 82nd Avenue and Southeast Division Street in one of the most racially and ethnically diverse areas in the city. Our neighbors and our community members can also be characterized by some of the lowest levels of income and educational attainment in the region and state, and we see the Powell Division Project's LPA as key to ensuring access to timely, reliable, and inexpensive transportation. Many stakeholders and myself consider this project as a means to create an education corridor, which links Mount Hood Community College, our Southeast Campus and Clime Center, with Portland State University and Oregon Health and Science University. This emphasis on education not only relates to the classroom, both Mount Hood Community College and our Southeast Campus boast small business development centers, and these support the primary business sector of this region, small businesses in affordable and culturally responsive ways. PCC's travel demand management strategy requires that the college continue to make transit a priority, and our students have voted to support this. As a result, we have increased our Transit Pass subsidy from 25% up to 50% this year, and our Transit Pass sales have recently doubled and remain in high demand. This LPA will support academic success for our students who live in Southeast Portland. Over 70% of our students live within five miles of our campus, and an overwhelming majority choose to study in person rather than online. We have a student population that is growing and is among the most diverse in the state. A majority of our campus student population identifies as non-white, and 68% are under the age of 30. PCC Southeast strongly supports the Portland, excuse me, the Powell Division Transit and Development Project, locally preferred alternative, and we encourage an affirmative vote today to advance this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Studi, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. For the record, my name is Ian Studi, I'm the Director of Transportation for Portland State University. I'm here today to express PSU's support for the Powell Division Transit Project. Accompanying my testimony today on behalf of PSU, you should also have received a joint letter of support from Portland State and OHSU. PSU, we are well aware of the multitude of positive impacts that can result from transit investments like the Powell Division Project. We have a proven track record of supporting transit infrastructure and capitalizing on that investment through our nationally-recognized transportation demand management programs. The net result is that the majority of PSU students and employees now utilize public transit to access our campus and the central city, removing thousands of vehicles from the road each day. This has also allowed PSU to develop hundreds of thousands of square feet of space for education and research without the need to build new and costly parking garages. We see similar promise in the potential for the Powell Division Project. In addition to our support for the project as a whole, PSU strongly urges the use of the Tellicum Bridge alignment for this new rapid transit line. This alignment choice is critical to ensuring transit access to both PSU and OHSU, to our campuses, and improving that service through this project. Our robust partnerships with OHSU and Portland Community College will benefit greatly from this project. We support the vision for an education corridor via public transit, and linking our campuses via a contiguous alignment is a smart decision for the city and Trimed to make. Portland State takes our responsibility as an anchor institution very seriously, and we wear our access-driven mission with pride. Our opportunity for East Portland, I'm sorry, an opportunity for East Portland residents to be able to access our campus more readily is, in our eyes, a win for the entire city. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak here today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Mr. Harrison?
Good afternoon, my name is Michael Harrison, and I manage local government and neighborhood relations for OHSU. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'm here, like our partner institutions, to support the LPA today. The vision for an education corridor is compelling, and one OHSU strongly endorses, and I thank Chabrie and Ian for their thoughtful comments. Through LIDs, SDC payments, and land donation, OHSU has partnered with the city and Trimed to significantly improve transit connections to South Waterfront over the years, most notably the Tellicum Crossing and the extension of light rail, the street car, and bus service to the southern end of the central city. While we're extremely grateful for these investments, our hope is that this is just the beginning. Taken together, the existing Tellicum Crossing and Transit Viaduct are more than a mile of dedicated transit lanes. As auto congestion increases in the future, the time savings of routing additional transit across the Tellicum will be significant, both in terms of transit efficiency as well as better knitting OHSU and PSU into an expanding central city. I urge your support for the resolution before you today, and thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for working on this. Thank you very much. Okay, let's take the next three. Steve?
Lori Boyson, Ken Marks, Andre Ball.
Good afternoon, welcome. I think Ms. Boyson, that you're first, if that's okay with you?
Thank you very much. I'm Lori Boyson, I'm the Executive Director for the Division Midway Alliance and a steering committee member on the Division Transit and Development Project. Mayor Hals and Commissioners, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today about the Bus Rapid Transit Project and its potential benefits for our community. Specifically, I would like to thank you, Commissioner Novick, for working with staff to add today's amendments to include a memorandum of understanding with community groups to assure that community stability goals are met. I don't believe DMA would be advocating for this project if you had not gotten the MOU added to the resolution, and I thank you for that. As the title suggests, the Division Transit and Development Project is more than just a transit project. At the outset of this project, committee members identified the following goals for the BRT development and transit improvements: establish a safe and convenient transportation option, create safe, healthy neighborhoods, and improve access to social, educational, environmental, and economic opportunities; and bring reduced disparities and equitably distribute the benefits and burdens of change and benefit current residents. Community groups recognize the opportunity to bring equitable development to East Portland, and in November 2014, committee members released the list of community stability goals that we believed, if met, would bring stability to our community. Since that time, these goals have been reduced to the four areas we believe will help achieve the project, goals listed above, and those are outlined in Exhibit C. They are the increased business technical assistance and support, as well as workforce development opportunities during and after project construction; a housing investment strategy and timeline that will commit to housing projects along the alignment, including East Portland; a strengthened commitment to use the 1,400 service hours from the Number Four to increase north-south transit service in East Portland, as well as a commitment to to add new service on 148th or 162nd, if possible, before 2021; a citizens advisory committee with representation on the project committee to keep community at the table through construction. East Portland needs these commitments regardless of the transit project. The action plan and supporting documents outline a successful transit project. A signed memorandum of understanding sends community the message that the City of Portland and Trimet are committed to East Portland's successes as well. Rest assured, community will continue to advocate for continued funding for the approved action plan throughout the entirety of this project. I want to thank you for your time and commitment to improving transit in Portland.
Thank you.
Let's ask a clarifying question. I thought I understood you to say that currently isn't bus transit on 148th or 162nd?
There is no, there is no transit service on one. The only north-south service in East Portland is 122nd, 181st.
Wow. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Lori, I just wanted to say, it's been an audit of work with you over the past four years, and I can't resist saying one last time that when I hear Division Midway Alliance, I think, aren't they the people that won the second world? No, on Pearl Harbor Day.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you. Mr. Blaugh?
I'm gonna allow him to go first.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. I beg your indulgence in that it's not easy for me to read this because of my vision, and so if I stumble a little bit. My name is Ken Marks. I am the East Portland Action Plan Representative to the Division High Capacity Rapid Transit Project. East Portland comprises 20% of the city's land and approximately 20% or 28% of the population. It has, also has significant, significantly higher concentrations of people of color, elderly, children, disabled, and immigrants, a large segment of whom are transit-dependent. On the record, it's not in my statement, but I want to make sure that you all know that East Portland Action Plan voted against the LPA when it came up for a vote. Having said that, EPAP appreciates Council's directive to the city bureaus to enter into an MOU by June 15, 2017. However, we do hope that it will be faster than that, and thus, we support going forward at this point, with that stip, with the stipulation that the MOU with the city agencies needs to move beyond the contents of Exhibit C for the reasons stated below. East Portland, East Portland is poised to lose much and gain little. Exhibit C was to have addressed our concerns, but the content and the commitments are inadequate, inadequate to our needs. A few points will establish this fact. Portland Housing Bureau is proposing 85 to 125 affordable units along the alignment for East Portland, while Cesar Chavez and Division is slated to get up to 300 units. Involuntary displacement can be prevented in East, or by investing in East Portland, but it has to be now. At the very least, the number of affordable units should be comparable. EPAP has long argued the Number Four underlying service should not be eliminated. Our position wasn't seriously considered by Trimet or Metro. Trimet did add back four stops in East Portland, but only after EPAP and DMA demonstrated that the number of people who would lose their primary stop was over fif, or 50% or higher in some places. Still, 37% of the East Portland stops will be eliminated. With respect to Trimet, Exhibit C demonstrates Trimet's unwillingness to commit to replacement of the lost, or loss of East Portland stops with north-south service, and only alludes to it in the most equivocable language, with so many caveats that even the best contract lawyers would blush. Trimet is only willing to quote-unquote "look" at north-south service by 2021, after the Division Project is finished. That is almost five years from now, and is unacceptable. There are no north-south routes in East Portland and Gresham between 122nd and 181st. This is a gap of 2.9 miles. In addition, there are no, I repeat, no routes in East Portland that directly go to the Columbia Corridor, where family wage jobs are concentrated. Trimet should begin the planning to add its service immediately. Trimet should not be adding service to more affluent areas while East Portland waits. Trimet should be banking resources while it completes the Title VI Analysis and Planning Process, which is expected to take 18 months. The council, or this council and the city, has a responsibility to advocate for East Portland with our Trimet and Metro partners. In that the current product does not demonstrate success thus far, we ask you to exert your influence at this juncture beyond the language of this resolution, and I should add Title, or Exhibit C. EPAP is responsibly exerting our role to provide leadership and guidance when we say that north-south service should be established on either 148th or 162nd before the High Capacity Transit Project is completed, and that these routes should be prioritized over adding service to other parts of the network for equity's sake. EPAP contends that no service should be added in any part of the network that have a higher median family income than East Portland and has a service gap less than the 2.9 miles that we experience in East Portland. We need city council to direct the above be addressed proactively, so that the community does not need to pursue alternative remedies such as Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Mr. Blaugh?
Andre Blaugh, Planning Sustainability Commissioner, but today I'm here as a citizen. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Novak for the amendments, putting those in. I have not been a fan of this project from its inception, and with those amendments, I am very encouraged that this project and the communities can work together to be, I think, as successful as it can be. The, my concern along with this project has not been about transit when it was the Powell Division, now the Division Division. It's been about displacement of individuals, it's been about housing, it's been about community involvement, and it's been about displacement of, of businesses also. These amendments address four things, in my view. One, it focuses the resources on the corridor, the housing resources, the business resources. It focuses the communities in the corridor, not in a general East Portland. Second, it pushes the spending upfront. Displacement's gonna happen upfront on these projects, not at the end of the project, so the faster we can spend for housing, business, preservation of individuals and businesses, the better off, and, and the benefits will attribute to those communities faster. They get to stay in the communities and work with US City Council in accepting those benefits, and I guess growing, and, because transit does bring other benefits to communities. We see them improve, we've seen it downtown, we've seen it in other communities, and we want those benefits to go to East Portland. But we don't want them to go to the residents that are there today, not the ones that are coming in. The other part is, this issue around Trimet and the service level. To me, this is a serious issue. I believe Commissioner Novak's P-Bot, Art Pierce has put together a, a part of a solution out there, it's called the Service Enhancement, that they're trying to get, actually, Trimet to add more buses to East Portland into the 448th, 162nd, but how do you bring service back to, that's gonna be taken away, back to a transit area, and ensure that they get better service overall because of a, a new transit line coming in? And that's important. I mean, these are people that are transit-dependent, and we want them to use transit. They, you heard earlier from staff, buses are filled up on the lines they do have. How do we get them more transit to fill up more buses? And that's a good problem to have. I mean, that's a good feature to have, especially in the kind of north-south ways. And lastly, the community involvement. The MOU is really an equity issue for me. It puts them in a perception area on an equal footing with everybody else on this issue, and allows them to sit at the table, and that's important for low-income and minority communities and communities of color. This is a neighborhood, and a number of neighborhoods that feel, from time to time, that, in my experience on the planning commission, are not listened to. And, and now you're saying, yeah, you're gonna be at the table, you're gonna be part of that conversation and part of the planning process, and we are gonna listen to you. So, thank you for that, because I think the communities want to be at the table, they want to provide input, and they want to be constructive members of this community. And in my experience, I, I've been doing this as long as you, Mayor.
That's, we shouldn't admit that.
And I was just disappointed to see communities saying no to a transit project, because it's been since the South North, and if you remember that, long ago, that's '96, '97, that someone had said no, and on a transit project. We have been the model city for bringing communities together to go to the federal government, and we should continue that, and you do that with involving communities and getting them to come forward. So, thank you very much. I guess the last thing I would say is, it's the accountability now. It is holding our partners to do what they say they're gonna do. It's doing what we say we're gonna do from the Housing Bureau and, and P-Bot, and also funding. You heard earlier, there's lack of business money for the business support, so the budgets coming up are gonna be important to ensure that we fund these things, because that's how the businesses today, we're gonna probably have to utilize part of that money to stay there, because transit does bring a lift, and, in property values and things, and we want those businesses to be preserved and benefit from that lift coming from this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it the understanding of the memorandum of understanding that the parties are going to come back to us by June to have a proposal for how to do the bus service on 148th, 168th, 162nd?
I'm not sure. You'd want to talk to Trimet about how there, there's a process of planning that needs to start with Trimet about how they're gonna put together their transit service, and I would encourage that to be part of the MOU, and I believe that's what's proposed in the MOU.
Yeah, but it's, it seems to me that, I mean, I'm appalled, I will stop whining about the 44 not going off enough on Sundays. I think actually, there's, there's services to southwest, which have been improved, at the same time that there's nothing on those two streets, and it seems to me that having a loop that would go one, one way and one the other way, just not coming into town, because a lot of people don't want to catch the bus downtown. As you mentioned about getting to the Columbia Corridor, we heard earlier this week that 59% of renters drive to, to work, and we know that a lot of, East Portland has rental as, residents as, as community members, so it's not surprising, isn't it? And then we were looking at the bus service to schools, and we heard, well, David Douglas and Park Rose has their yellow buses, but if you miss, it's not surprising again that when you miss the yellow bus, you have no other option. So, I hope that this, I hope Trimet and others who are listening are hearing the urgency in my voice, and Commissioner, I'll be sure to watch out for this, make sure it comes back. Thank you.
If I may, Commissioner Fritz, part of the issue, again, that East Portland Action Plan has is the Trimet's timeline and waiting to start north-south service, possibly waiting to-
Yeah, no, that, I want us to be very clear, that's not acceptable to me.
Thank you.
So, I think that needs to happen sooner rather than later, and I think it would actually be, it sounds like it would be packed, but all the buses, I bet you would have a challenge with the running enough.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz.
Yeah, amen. Thank you all very much. Okay, that's it for invited testimony, is that correct, Commissioner?
That's correct.
All right, we had some other folks signed up, I believe?
Right, we have seven speakers. Please come up when I call your name. Douglas Allen, Terry Dublinsky Milton, and John Carr. And they'll be followed by Arlene Canura, Susan Pierce, and Chris Portillo.
Welcome. Good afternoon.
To the record, my name is Doug Allen, live in Southeast Portland. Mayor Hales and members of the council, Division BRT is neither light rail nor a substitute for light rail. However, quoting Trimet General Manager Neil McFarland, it may be a model for other heavy-use lines in our system. As you may know, Trimet fixed route ridership grew a paltry 5% total over the decades from 2005 to 2015, and lately, we're seeing actual year-over-year declines in the range of 5%. As population and density grow and we expect to reduce reliance on the automobile, this disconnect between housing and our transportation systems cannot continue. If Division BRT does anything, the least it must demonstrate is a path towards increased transit ridership. Unfortunately, there are three interconnected problems with the current plan. Number one, there are excessive gaps between some of the stops. The fleet will be 60-foot-long diesel buses. Service will operate no more frequently than the current Line Four Division bus, approximately every 15 minutes during the day base. Now, remember, this is not an express bus. There is no underlying local service planned for Division. The BRT will be the local service. If Trimet reduces access and fails to increase frequency, ridership may not grow even if the signal system speeds up the buses. Is this really a wise model for all of the heavily-used Trimet bus routes, removing a majority of the stops? The stop spacing is defined in the LPA with some gaps close to one-half mile. Stops should be no further apart than a quarter mile. Most Trimet stops are now between one-tenth and a sixth mile apart. The proven way to increase ridership is to increase frequency. Day-based service should be at least every 10 minutes, and it should be operated with a fleet of battery-electric buses. For most of the day, standard-length electric buses will be more than adequate, but it may make sense to add a few larger buses for selected peak trips. Recent advances in battery technology mean that transit buses with adequate performance and range are now available at a lower lifecycle cost than diesel buses. So, why aren't electric buses part of the plan as a favored alternative? When I testified before the Powell Division Steering Committee recommending battery-electric buses at more frequent intervals, I was told that electric buses were not part of the plan. They had been considered and rejected. Multiple project handouts make clear that service frequency will not be increased, and the vehicles will be 60-foot diesel buses. Unless you speak up now, the opportunity to use non-polluting electric vehicles running on renewable power will be lost, and likewise, unless you ask for more frequent service and additional stops were needed, the project will be a tragic waste of city, Trimet, and federal resources with no new ridership to show for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Just, just ask, I mean, it speaks to what you brought up at the beginning.
I want to hear about that.
Commissioner Novick, is that correct, that there's no option for, for changing to a different technology?
I'd ask staff to come up to respond to that.
Okay, well, maybe at the end, yeah, I'm sorry.
Let's do that later, let's still hear from people, but I want to, I want to ask-
Appreciate the concern.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it up. We'll, we'll get you up later, Alan, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. Terry Dublinsky Milton, I do have handout for you. I want to speak in favor of the project, but specifically towards the issues that have been talked about in the inner neighborhoods, because of, I'm speaking as, as a private citizen, but because of the boards I've sat on over the last three years, I've been tracking this project from the beginning, and this is where I tell you, three years ago, I said, I told you so, it wouldn't work without dedicated lines on Powell. And so, what has happened over the last year is when we realized that there wasn't enough money for Powell, it was pigeonholed into Division, and there's a lot of reticence. But, I'd like to say that a lot of this is because of the excitement of dealing with Powell, because Powell was such a monster, and I know that that's not part of this project. But the reason why we, I think, for the inner neighborhoods that we should support it, is the 30th Station was added at the last couple of months, this was one of the big gaps in, in the inner Division. It completes the bike line gap between 52nd and 60th, will have increased reliability and capacity, and it does increase the service on the 20 bus line as part of the project, the 20's gonna be moving up to frequent service. The biggest problem is at the Clinton Triangle, and the, when the orange line came down, was built, we had an overpass that was pulled from 16th and Clinton area. And now, when you get those freight trains, that's it, people try to carry their bikes over, they go under the tracks, somebody's gonna get a limb ripped off eventually. It's, this, safety there- It's this safety there and the replacement of the Gideon Street overpass, which is part of the amendments, which was included, really does need to be part of this. I'm going to spend the last minute and 20 seconds talking about Powell. The excitement and the reticence was because we were excited about fixing Powell, and now we can't. And it is a big project. And so, what I want to talk about is the future of Powell and putting this as a high-capacity project. I'm calling this the Purple Line. Okay? The Purple Line would go from Clockmas Town Center to Beaverton Transit Center via Powell and through downtown. It would cut the commute time from Clockmas Town Center to PSU from 53 minutes at 28 stops down to 30 minutes, estimate with 16 stops. And it would shorten the commute time from Clockmas Town Center to Beaverton Transit Center from 73 minutes with a transfer to 50 minutes with no transfer. Now, when you're looking at long-range regional planning, we have our exception land where they're building single-family homes in Damascus and Happy Valley, but the tech sector's in Beaverton. So, if we're ever going to drop down the people who are commuting through Portland, we're going to have to give up better transit. And at this point, we'll be able to redesign Powell, because this would be a billion-dollar project after the southwest corridor, and by that point, the current administration will be gone, so we'll probably have money for transit. But it would allow us to really pull down the single occupancy vehicle rate. And my last three seconds, we're adding 20 high-capacity, high-frequency bus on the 20 bus line on a high-crash corridor without improvements between 41st and 68th. We need to pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales and Commissioners. My name is John Carr. I'm a resident of South Tabor, and I'm here today as a representative of Portland Clean Air. Portland Clean Air has over 1,500 Portland donors and is working with a dozen stakeholder groups throughout Oregon addressing air pollution. First, it is our view that the addition of high-capacity transit to the Powell-Division corridor will help improve local air quality by making transit more attractive than driving. But I want to speak to the potential of this project to do even more towards reducing pollution, noise, and carbon emissions in this rapidly densifying corridor. And to do that, I want to focus on a central aspect that has come up regarding the Bus Rapid Transit Project, and that is the buses themselves. From the start, project planners have considered using a quote "newer bus technology than diesel." We have no reason to doubt that this is still their intention, yet the final recommendation before you today leaves the bus type an open question. I should clarify, bus size is spelled out, called for is a larger 60-foot articulated bus, but the propulsion type is left open. We ask you to weigh in on that today and to amend the resolution to adopt the locally-preferred alternative to specify the city's preference for battery electric buses. In its most recent National Air Toxicity Assessment, the Environmental Protection Agency reported that Portland is the worst American city for respiratory distress from air pollution. While newer diesel buses emit far less pollution than earlier models, electric buses take it all the way. According to a 2016 analysis by the Union of Concerned Scientists and the Green Linings Institute, battery-electric lifecycle emissions of nitrogen oxides and particulate matter are lower than diesel. Global warming emissions, a key factor in reaching Portland's 2050 sustainability goals, are nearly 75% lower. Noise emissions, too, are significantly less, according to a 2007 study by Stiano Engineering. This is particularly important on a densely urban route like Division. Two North American manufacturers now offer battery electric buses in the size recommended for this project. And though the upfront cost is higher, lower fuel and maintenance costs actually make them a better deal than diesel over their lifespan. The lifespan of a bus is 12 years, by the way, so whether it's diesel or electric, the initial fleet purchase for this project will likely be on Division Street until the year 2033. The Portland Streetcar and MAX have set the bar for clean, electric, high-capacity transit. If Bus Rapid Transit is the future of high-capacity transit in Portland, electric buses have to be part of it. Portland Clean Air urges you to amend the resolution to adopt the locally-preferred alternative to specify a preference for battery electric buses. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Next three, please.
Arlene Canora, Susan Pierce, and Rick Bartko.
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Arlene, I think you get to go first, if you'd like to.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor Hales, Commissioners. Commissioner Novick, thank you very much for your amendment. I am cautiously supporting this project because of the amendments. Without that, those amendments, I do not feel that it meets the needs that we as community members are doing our very best to provide services for East Portland residents. In past, when the wording says that it's aspirational, well, unfortunately, the group that has paid for it has been our low-income bus riders, which we have a number of in East Portland. And I ask, I strongly urge that this MOU, in all of its iterations, which includes also consideration for non-diesel buses, be supported. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan, would you like to be next? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Susan Pierce, speaking as Chair of Oxford Aberneth Neighborhood District Association, or HAND. I'd like to talk about Transportation System Plan Project Number 20185, or that bridge that we refer to as the Brooklyn Bridge, others refer to as the Gideon Bridge that was mentioned earlier. On behalf of the HAND board members and residents, I urge you to support the construction of a pedestrian and bicycle bridge across the UP railroad and MAX tracks near the MAX Orange Line station and the crossings at 11th, 12th, and Milwaukee Boulevard in the very near future. The project is currently at the end of the TSP list of projects with a 20-year expected timeline for completion. This is a matter of safety, zoning concept and reality, and ridership. And by the way, you're getting an emailed version of my comments. The bridge would replace a bridge that once crossed the UP railroad tracks at 16th Avenue, but was removed during the construction of the Orange Line. There were initial assurances that the bridge would be replaced, but that segment was put aside during the recalibration of the project, when federal funding was going to be 50% instead of 60%. While the project was under budget at the completion of the Orange Line project, federal funding was removed before that bridge was replaced. The crossings at 11th, 12th, and Milwaukee are frequently blocked by long periods, four long periods, by slow-moving freight trains, which, according to information provided by UP Railroad, are likely to increase in length and frequency, along with the passage of, and also blocking the passages of the MAX trains and that complex signal cycle for that complex intersection. Impatient bicyclists and pedestrians have been observed and documented on videos climbing through cockpings between trains. Indeed, one of the elected officials in this room once videoed eight different, at one stop, at one event, eight different people climbing through in a 35-minute period, and then that only, it could have been more, but the battery died on his phone.
You're not saying one of the elected officials here climbed through the train?
He didn't climb through the train.
Okay, good.
He was videoing others climbing through the train. Tug on my sleeve at News.
I'd like to mention the agenda, too.
A bridge for pedestrians and bicyclists would offer an alternative to this very dangerous and risky activity. Current and proposed zoning provides for increased density and limited parking for automobiles within a prescribed one-quarter-mile radius of a transit stop, including the Clinton Station, a very reasonable concept. However, all HAND residential sites within that quarter-mile, all HAND residential sites, subject to those zoning rules, are unable to access the site, often because of the blockage of those trains. And so, that belies that zoning concept. A HAND, I'm going to skip here, because I'm, we've noted that several times in letters to you and the Bureau of Sustainability. HAND residents from within and beyond the quarter-mile are reporting that they are fearful of relying on Orange Line for transit after having found themselves stuck on one side of the trains and then missing important commitments. So, potential ridership is therefore lost because people aren't even bothering to try.
Try to wrap up, Susan.
The original, the original bridge was, so, okay, you get my point. I do want to leap ahead to mention that HAND, and I have a minute more.
Move for a minute already.
We're over a minute, we're giving you extra time.
HAND opposes the BRT for a number of reasons. You're getting an email on this as well. But one very important reason is, again, those long backups. The question isn't whether they can get across at 8th Avenue, the question is whether they can even get to 8th Avenue. Backups, we're very familiar with them, backups can be as far as our favorite corner of Third and Harrison, and as far as 20th and Division, that's a flaw. There are a few others, but for that reason, we originally applauded the improved benefits for East Portland, but think the money could better be spent elsewhere at this time.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales, Commissioners. Two parts. The first part is the...
Put your name in the record again.
I'm sorry, Rick Bartko, with Division Midway Alliance, board member and treasurer, and Mill Park resident. And I'm speaking more in my, with my Mill Park resident hat. I want to just say how incredibly supportive the city has been, the NPIs, the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiatives, their mentors in PDC, Jade Ipano, DMA, East Portland Action Plan, these folks have all come together to advocate for East Portland. Capacity building is going great guns, these folks are getting the community engaged in a way that I think is very exciting. And hats off to all of those folks. Second part is a biblical verse, Proverbs 29:18, from the King James Version, "Where there is vision, the people," where there is no vision, the people perish. And there's the second part of that, the corollary, we won't go into that one. I've seen that in a public space, I've seen that in a county commissioners' chambers before. And just as a suggestion, a recommendation, maybe not this particular one, but perhaps here to provide a reminder to folks in the future how important it is that we have vision for not just some parts of the city, but all of the city, in a way that benefits all citizens with social justice and equity. Perhaps that's what the vision should be going forward, and we should be constantly reminded of that in some way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, you have some more folks?
We have Todd Struble.
All right, you may be the last. Any others? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales, Commissioners. My name is Todd Struble, and I'm the JADE District NPI manager. I just wanted to echo and reiterate a lot of the things that we've heard and the values around the JADE District and the NPI program as a whole. We're really centered on preventing displacement and improving economic and health outcomes for the residents of our city. And this project has the potential to support that. We also know that it will bring those displacement pressures. We did want to say that there are lots of good things in the local action plan that we want to support, and we also want to appreciate the process and effort that city and project staff have gone through to work with community organizations and the leadership on the project, considering displacement and land use issues early in the process rather than after the project has already gone in. Now, being said, we're still going to hold project staff's feet to the fire on a lot of the issues that you heard about before, particularly with respect to the allocation of service hours of the four north and north-south routes. You know, we're on 82nd, and we hear that same concern from our residents and neighbors that north-south is particularly difficult, even though there is a 72 that goes on 82nd. But I did want to go on record, supporting the local action plan items related to housing and business mitigation, and continue to work with project staff to ensure that our most vulnerable residents and businesses are protected from displacement. We've seen in other jurisdictions, business mitigation plans work to support businesses. For example, Little Tokyo in the Los Angeles area has implemented programs like zero-interest loans to support their businesses through construction. In that case, it was a light rail program. But there are funding mechanisms, and we have ideas that we're going to continue to work with project staff on to try and implement for the businesses in our neighborhoods. And then finally, I just want to reiterate the housing piece. Inclusionary zoning will, of course, impact coordination, and we're definitely going to go on record as supporting the CCC testimony, Coalition of Communities of Color testimony that you'll likely hear tomorrow. So, with that, I think everything else I've talked about, or would talk about, has already been said, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Thanks very much.
Thanks so much.
So, I know we had one question for Alan, maybe there are others, but if you could come up and address the bus technology question?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Alan LeTo with Trimate, Director of Planning and Policy. On the bus technology, it is true that right now, on kind of the sketch cost estimate we have, that they were assuming articulated diesel buses. It is also true that we have a real interest in the ability to potentially run electric buses on this line. We're not at the point where we feel like we could commit to that. There is essentially one manufacturer right now that you could buy an articulated electric bus from. I won't mention the name of it, but it's a relatively newcomer to the space and has only recently gotten its BY America compliance. So, we do hope that the other manufacturers who make buses will turn to articulated electric buses, and that, as you said, Mr. Mayor, we do have some more time to look at that as a possibility.
I think that the concern you're hearing from the community and from the council is that in a city with a climate action plan as aggressive as ours, and just having been told that we have to move faster, not slower, or even at the same pace, to build another project and rely on diesel buses, I think would be a very unfortunate outcome.
And we'd invite any encouragement from the city on that point.
Can you address the reason why there isn't any north-south on 162nd and 148th?
Yeah, we have, I think you probably know, there's a lot of east-west service in that area. And that's, for historical reasons, that's always been the stronger demand and continues to be so, unfortunately, despite the need for some north-south service. And so, we are now, of course, looking in, under the guidance of our Service Enhancement Plan, which has a vision for including north-south service on both of those, looking at the opportunity, and certainly not, have gone a little bit farther than I think you just heard in testimony. Part of the attachment that you should have is a memo from Neil, talking about our commitment to, at the very least, reallocating the four Division service to the corridor and putting at least one north-south service, one north-south service on that as part of, part of that proposed service.
I don't really understand why it's connected even to the Division-Powell Rapid Transit. It just...
So, each year, as I think you know, our payroll tax is slowly going up over the course of 10 years, a small increment each year. So, we have a relatively small, unfortunately, amount of service that we can invest in different places each year. Right now, back in September, we just improved the 122nd north-south service. This coming period, we're looking at improving 182nd, 181st, which is just outside the city limits, of course. And so, we would hope to be able to do 148th and/or 162nd at some point before then, but it's a small increment each year. The difference is that in 2021, when and if this project opens, then instead of taking the four Division hours and putting that into the project, we're saying, just as we did with Interstate MAX, just as we did with the Orange Line, saying, all of those hours stay in the community and get reoriented to new service. And that is so much more than we have available in any given year, that it's a much greater opportunity to make really substantial improvements.
Equity sometimes requires taking resources from somewhere else and putting it where there isn't any. And so, recently, the 94 Rapid Transits above the Transit Center has been put on during the day, which is certainly very nice, but it's by no means full. I'd like you to look at what could you, where could you reduce service in order to put it on those two streets? Because we know that there's a lot of low-income people there, the only grocery store is at WinCo, that really need this service way before 2021. So, could you go away and look at it, please?
We certainly will, and we will look not only now, but each year at that, because we get to make... we, we get to make some improvements every year.
I don't think I've ever been asked as a transit rider to fill out a survey or even to give suggestions about where things maybe are too generous in terms of bus service, if we need to do some sacrificing, but I'd be happy to work with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Alan or for the staff? Thank you very much. If not, we may be ready to take action on the resolution. Let's do, please vote.
Novak.
This has been an extraordinary project with an extraordinary level of community involvement, and I realize that it's been a difficult project and a contentious project for a lot of folks. I really appreciate people's willingness to work together and to work together beyond the point where they thought they were going to pull back from the project and to agree to continue working together based on commitments that we're making now. So I just want to thank the staff. I want to thank Councilor Stacy. I want to thank the folks at Trimate. I want to thank the folks from EPAP, from the Division Midway Alliance. I want to thank Leo Treat. I want to thank Andrea Valderrama, my office, who's worked on this. I want to thank April Bertelson, since I'm looking right at her, and I want to take this last opportunity to thank her for something. So really appreciate all the work. We have, no, we have lots of work left to do. Aye.
Fritz.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Novak, for your dedication to the bureau that you were given four years ago. You've achieved so many great things, it's not impossible to list them all, but you've done it by continuing to address the issues that most need to be addressed. I was at the Oregon Walks fundraiser last Friday, along with several of the people in this room. Commissioner Novak got a standing ovation before and after his speech, and we certainly appreciate that you have devoted such an amount of your heart, as well as effort and your teams. So thank you for all your work. Thank you, everybody who's here. We certainly need to have better service to East Portland, and I'm glad we're going to be able to work together on it. Thank you. Aye.
Saltzman.
Well, I want to also thank Commissioner Novak for his leadership on this, and thank to the Steering Committee and Metro Councilors Stacy and Craddock for their leadership on this. This is really a, a great project, albeit a, you know, somewhat slimmed-down vision, but it probably makes more sense. And I like how we've sort of adjusted some, the realities of this project to sort of some of the constraints we faced in the field in east and southeast Portland in terms of making a system work. I think the, the smaller but articulated buses, hopefully they will be electric. We can get that. I realize we don't want to rely on one vendor or one manufacturer, but I hope something, I hope that, given all the concerns we have about diesel particulates, that other manufacturers will, will take heed. So thank you for this good work, and I look forward to this project being, being funded. Aye.
Hales.
Let me start with what may seem like a tangential reference, but it isn't, at least for me. A few weeks ago, we had the South Portland neighborhood here with some folks that were worried about the possibility that the city would jam the streetcar further south from the south waterfront down into their neighborhood. And I was at some pains to reassure those folks that certainly now, if not usually, transit projects are going to get built where people want them. They're not going to get pushed into neighborhoods that don't want them, here in Portland especially. And, and frankly, I think now in the, in the turmoil and confusion about what's happening to our national government, that statement is even more true. It has been the case that transit projects funded in part by the federal government have been a bipartisan commitment, that you get, you go through this process that we're in now, you get to a project that's approved by the federal government, and they sign a contract called a Full Funding Grant Agreement that pays for half the capital costs. That's how we've built most of, a lot of what we've built in this city. That's been the way that it's worked. And so a deal is a deal when you work with the federal government that way. But now we may be moving to the art of the deal, instead of a deal is a deal. And it may be that cities that can put up a higher local match will out, will outpace us. So all the more reason to come together and agree on what we do want and come together on a project that has community support, whether it's the technology that drives the buses, the routes, or where the stops are. So the better we get to yes here locally, the better chance we will have of having help beyond our own city to pay for this. And, and I, so therefore, I'm really happy about the progress that this project has made. So I'm very happy to support this, and I believe that this is a good project that will happen. And Steve, I want to echo my colleagues' comments. Transportation's close to my heart, and I still wear the Choo Choo Charlie label proudly. And when I asked you to lead this bureau, I believe that you would be passionate and effective in leading this agenda, and this is one more sign that that's true, and this is one more legacy of good planning for a better future in our city. So thank you. On behalf of this community and a lot of people who care a lot about transportation, good luck, and I look forward to writing this. Aye. Thank you all very much. Okay. Take a breath, and we'll move on.
Actually, I hope we don't take too long.
Not much of a breath. Okay. We're going to take up the next item, so while people are sorting themselves out, would you read item 1368, please?
1368. Authorize a surtax to the city's business license tax for publicly traded companies to subject U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission disclosure and reporting requirements if a subject company reports that the ratio of compensation of its executive, chief executive officer to median worker is equal to or greater than 100 to 1 under the commission's pay ratio disclosure rule.
Okay, Commissioner Novak, there's some, there's a few council questions I think that have been resolved. Is that right?
I believe so. And colleagues, I have to tell you, I am desperate to get this passed in the next seven minutes. If we get past the next seven minutes, we will meet East Coast media deadlines, and the whole point of this is to sponsor, is to spark a national movement. The likelihood of a national movement goes up if we meet East Coast media deadlines. So although this is near, dear me heart, I'm not going to say anything except aye, and I ask my colleagues to do the same.
All right, well, we got to, we got to call the question first. So unless there's any reason not to, we're going to take a roll call vote, then, please.
Novak.
Aye.
Fritz.
I want to be very clear that when Commissioner Novak first told me about this, I was very interested. As he flushed it out, I got even more interested. So I have never traded votes on this council, and I never will. I solidly support this, have done for several months, and I think we should just do more of these things. Aye.
Saltzman.
Well, with all due respect to Commissioner Novak for his idea, I've been on this council long enough to have experienced severe days when we had to step forward and help our school districts by imposing a surcharge on our business license fee to raise about $20 million a year in 2003. And I really believe that the headroom under the business income tax should be preserved for true unforeseen situations, true emergency situations, which, given Oregon's revenue situation, given local governments' revenue situations, are never too far around the corner, unfortunately. So with all due respect, I don't believe this is the right time and the right place and the right reason to increase the business income tax, and I vote no.
Hales.
Big problems of our time, climate, race relations, income inequality, are being addressed by cities. It probably should be a federal priority, and I hope someday it is, but right now, it falls to cities to do creative, progressive policymaking, and that's exactly what this is. Thank you, Commissioner Novak. Aye. All right, let's move on. We have, 1369 is rescheduled, so you don't need to read that, correct?
I should read it.
Okay.
Real quick. Except findings of the South Portal Partnership Plan project pertaining to the proposed changes to roadway alignments of Southwest Bond Avenue, Southwest Moody Avenue, Southwest Hamilton Street, Southwest Hamilton Court, Southwest Lowell Street, and Southwest Thomas Street, and direct implementation of a plan to fund, design, and construct remaining south waterfront street connections.
Okay, without objection, the site is rescheduled to December 14th at 9:30 a.m. 1370.
Adopt the open and accountable elections policy.
Mr. Fritz.
Thank you. This is something that I've been working on since last July, when the mayor told me he's not able to run for reelection because of the time it takes to fundraise and the expenses of our local elections. What I just handed out is a substitute. I'm sorry it didn't get attached to the memos for, for some reason. So this, you remember, the last hearing, the hearing we had, I said that we would convene a work group to work through the issues that were raised. And so representatives from Common Cause, Osburg, communities of color, lever women voters, the Auditor's Office, and several council offices participated in that work group, and these documents include the changes that will address the concerns. And so I'd like to ask Christine Nieves to come forward to walk us through those details.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. So I first came before you, November 3rd, to hear open and accountable elections, and as Commissioner Fritz said, since then, we have put together a work group and come up with potential solutions to the concerns that were raised during the November 3rd hearing. So what I'm going to do is go through each substantive change, and then if there are questions, we can do that towards the end. So the first is the question of administration. We understand that the Auditor's Office was unable to administer this program. So we searched for an appropriate administrator, and we landed on the Office of Neighborhood Involvement. The Office of Neighborhood Involvement administers many programs, which include, you know, thorough public involvement process, which is a necessary attribute for administrating this program. So the open and accountable elections program will be housed in the Public Involvement and Best Practices Program within ONI. It will be staffed by a program coordinator and a program specialist, and these two positions will support the volunteer oversight board. And thank you to Commissioner Fritz, or excuse me, to Commissioner Fish, who is not here today, for recommending this next change. So in the current code, donors may only ask for public match for one candidate per race, which means that donors can still give up to $250 to any candidate, but they may only request matching funds for one candidate per race. And thank you to former auditor Gary Blackmire for recommending, providing more time to set a foundation for this program. So with the amendment before you, the funding will be included for this program in the 1718 city budget. The program of actually providing matching funds will start in July 2019 for the 2020 elections. Training of potential candidates and their campaign treasurers will be required prior to participating in the program. An additional directive is added to the ordinance clarifying the director of ONI will begin the preliminary implementation process, which includes hiring a consultant to start the administrative rules and construct the commission, once the ordinance is adopted. And finally, thank you to Commissioner Novak for raising and helping to solve the following issues, which arise due to the program being staffed in ONI rather than the city auditor's office. The first issue is the perceived or actual conflict of interest of the commissioner in charge of ONI overseeing the structure and administration of the overall program. So the solution we came up with was to require all changes, all administrative changes, to be brought before the full city council for consideration and adoption. And as you know, most changes will come through the Open and Accountable Elections Oversight Board. That is the vehicle we have set up for the program to house changes. The second is the potential conflict of interest for a commissioner in charge of ONI during an election, so when this commissioner is up for election. In that situation, the mayor may appoint another commissioner to oversee the program during the election, providing dual support. And we saw this with the Office of Healthy Rivers, which was housed in the Bureau of Environmental Services. Commissioner Saltzman was in charge of the Bureau of Environmental Services at the time, but the Office of Healthy Rivers reported to both Commissioner Fritz and Commissioner Saltzman. So that was the dual supervision that we hope to model for this program. And finally, if a commissioner in charge of ONI is up for reelection and a complaint is filed, the Open and Accountable Elections Board will have the authority to ask council directly for approval to contract for and appoint an outside investigatory body, and these will all be included in the proposed administrative changes.
Thank you. Is there any questions on those?
I didn't understand that change, the Commissioner Fish, that you described.
Yeah.
You lost me on that one.
Sorry. So a donor can only request for public matching funds for one candidate per race. So they can give, they can give—
Per race?
Per race.
So they can't just give contributions to everybody who's running?
Exactly.
And they get public matching for those?
Right. They're allowed to give, but only one will be matched. So that was the concern, is what if people were ganging up on a particular candidate? And also, I think also, to be responsible with public funds. What we found with, with public campaign financing before with voter-owned elections, some good-hearted people gave $5 contributor because they believed in the system and not necessarily understanding that that was an impact on public dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Other questions?
So I'd like to move the substitute, and then I understand Commissioner Saltzman may have an amendment.
Okay, so Commissioner Fritz moves the substitute. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And we'll, do we not take action on putting the substitute before us? We should, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's take action on the substitute and then on your amendment, or is it better to do both?
Well, I'd like to get the amendment out there and get testimony on it. And I'm offering this amendment, although I support it, I'm offering it on behalf of Commissioner Fish, and that amendment is to really, is to refer this item to the voters at the May 16, 2017 election.
And I'm willing to, oh, sorry. I'm willing to second that for the purposes of discussion as a professional courtesy to my colleagues to the left.
Thank you. Thank you. I would just say that, and I believe, I believe I speak for Commissioner Fish on this point too, is I think we're better when we rely on our voters to affect major changes that cost, cost them at their pocketbooks. We've done that from, we did it with the arts tax. We didn't have to refer the arts tax, but we did. I think we better insulated ourselves as a result from the onslaught of criticisms and attempts to undermine it. We also have done it for the roads just last year, and I think we're better for doing that, especially considering all the criticism we encountered on various incarnations of the street fee. We ultimately submitted something to the voters. I've always ascribed to seeking voter support and believing for funding mechanisms, because I believe we're stronger for it. The children's levy has been renewed overwhelmingly three times by asking voters to support it. And I just think there's a, I just think we build trust and credibility with our, our public when we do it that way. And even, indeed, even this issue has been voted on by voters. I can't remember what the year was, but it was probably—
2010.
2010. Okay. So even this issue has been before voters, so I think it clearly establishes this is not untrodden ground when it comes to asking voters whether they support it or not. And I tend to think that voters would support this, but I, I just think that there's a puzzling, baffling fear not to ask for voter support. I think we'd be better off if we did, and I appreciate Commissioner Fritz's putting this together. I think it has a lot of innovation to it, and so I appreciate that. I just think it'd be better if it was to be voted on by our public.
Okay, thank you. So we should take testimony on the substitute and on the other proposed amendment? So we'll see. I think we had a couple of people signed up anyway, so Christina, thank you. We'll stand by and see if we have other questions for you. Unless, unless you had anything else to add that I cut you off on.
That was it. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. So do we have someone signed up?
Michael Callahan.
And we had some enlivened testimonies. Are they still here?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, and you haven't invited testimony?
Yeah, but that's fine, Mr. Callahan can go first.
Come on up. No, we'll take the invited testimony. Sorry.
All right, I thank you for the time.
Put your name in the record, please.
Michael Callahan is my name. I have one question. I just called Jerry today over in Multnomah County because they run the elections. Nobody knows, this is true in every government authority in this country, nobody knows what computer program is put in the computer when the ballots are counted. Will this provide accountability for that process, or will that remain secret?
Good question.
The county oversees the elections, as you say, so our proposal does add some safeguards for protecting public money and transparency of candidate behavior, but it's the election office in Multnomah County that is responsible for the actual counting of them.
Well, I'll take that as a no.
That's not the purpose of this.
Well, you know, I have a significant problem. As you mentioned, Mayor, our most recent election, okay, now you'll find this on Facebook, that there has been computer fraud committed. We saw when Bush won over Gore in Florida. I was on this in Alaska, and I kind of want to say a little—
Could you start the timer, please?
Little thing here for myself, okay? I litigated in 1992, the primary in Alaska. Took me five years. First time in the history of the United States, an official ballot had been declared illegal. Okay? We had four of them illegal in Alaska. Okay, I started checking into computerized tabulation. I litigated the '94 election, in which three incumbents were thrown out in the House, all of them Ds, beaten by Rs, one who spent $3,000 on his campaign. The head of the Data Processing Review Board said that Sequoia Pacific refused their test decks. They insisted, they ran their test decks, they found an error in the computer program that would have allowed ballots cast for one candidate to have been counted for another. I litigated that. I litigated that. The judge wouldn't do anything after a year and a half. Legislature had already met, new election cycle. I quit, okay? The fix is on. Okay? And I think we saw that with this last election. Okay? I want there to be a way to confirm that these votes are being accurately counted. And if we don't know what computer program goes in the computer, just like taking your ballot and stuffing it in a box behind the door and somebody yells out what the results are, it is unacceptable. Please, put that in there so Multnomah County, people at peace, Portland State can write a computer code to check ballots. Anybody can. Please, secure our democracy. It is not secure now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and you had some invited testimony?
Yes, if the folks who were invited, if you'd like to come up, please. Not sure who's still here. And I appreciate your patience.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Wait, come on up if you want. All right, who would ever like to go first?
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Kate Titus. I'm here on behalf of Common Cause and also on behalf of a coalition of over 30 local organizations representing Portland's diverse communities and community public interests. Thank you for your responsiveness on this issue that's of growing concern to so many of our communities here in Portland. Briefly, I just want to affirm the strength of this ordinance and the proposed amendments that are before you here today. So first, with regard to the policy as a whole, I want to point out that Open and Accountable Elections is based on a well-tested model, already operational in several other communities. Since others have pioneered this, Portland will not be charting unknown territory. There's already an established body of expertise that has informed this ordinance and will guide rulemaking and implementation. Moreover, this policy has already proven itself as a tool to achieve three outcomes that we're seeking here in Portland. One, to increase and diversify community participation in elections, which I would say then adds to community trust in our elected government. Two, to support a broader candidate pool and more representative government. And three, to make it possible for any candidate to opt out of a big money, of big money politics if they choose. So with regard to the specific amendments before you, we are supportive of the proposed amendments worked out in recent weeks to address oversight and administration of the program. First, we're comfortable with ONI housing this program. There may come a point where the Commission chooses to revisit this, a point at which it could make sense to move administration to another location such as the Auditor's Office or even the State Elections Division. However, for the immediate startup and foreseeable future, we believe that housing the program under ONI provides advantages, particularly for launching an effective community oversight commission. I also want to affirm the specific solutions proposed to address potential conflicts of interest related to placing oversight and admission, administration of the program at ONI. To be clear, we would have to insulate against conflicts of interest regardless of where the program is housed. Oversight of all aspects of our election system across the country, not just in Portland, is generally handled by elected public servants. So we can't completely avoid this issue, but instead, we need to take steps to insulate against specific conflicts of interest created by any given arrangement. In this case, we believe that smart precautions have been identified. By engaging a community board in the process of identifying and making any changes to the program and requiring all the administrative rules to be brought before the full commission for consideration, you create a healthy process for public input and transparent deliberation and limit the authority of the Commissioner who's in charge of ONI. Likewise, providing dual oversight of the Open and Elections Program within ONI during an election where the Commissioner in Charge of ONI is running for election, provides a good safeguard to protect ONI staff independence. And in addition, a board that could also appoint, the board could also appoint an alternative investigative body to replace ONI, Open and Accountable Elections Staff, as was mentioned by Cristina, and that's something I think also adds to this. So lastly, I would like to just briefly touch on three other priorities that I think we, I hope we don't lose sight of in the implementation provided we are able to go forward with this program. One, I think all of us here are committed to find a way to ensure that all Portland residents, if they're eligible under state and federal law to contribute to political candidates, should be allowed and encouraged to participate in this system by having their campaign contributions matched up to the first $50. This includes, even those who are not registered to vote or who are legal residents but not yet citizens, we want to welcome all Portlanders into, to have a voice in the democratic process. As yet, we've only identified the voter files as a means to verify people's authentic eligibility. We'll need to identify one or more additional methods to ensure full inclusivity within the bonds of the law. And I believe that we can work that out during the implementation process. Two, the current proposal provides that a single donor can give a match contribution to no more than one candidate, which was just discussed. I believe that what's really at stake here is that those contributors who have a greater capacity to give more than $50 shouldn't be able to tap public funds for unlimited gifts to multiple candidates. However, in principle, if, if a single contributor wanted to split their $50 between two candidates or even $20, giving 10 to one and 10 to another, I think that is within the democratic spirit that's intended and shouldn't be discouraged. So while I'm not suggesting that we delay the bill to address this issue, I do suggest that this is an adjustment that should be discussed and worked out during the implementation process. And three, lastly, I would just remind us all to not forget the importance of making sure that this program is intuitive and easy to understand for candidates and contributors alike. To that end, it will be important during rulemaking and the startup to make sure that all systems and materials are clear and accessible and that there's a well-developed candidate training and public education component in place as an integral part of the program. I would just address one other point that was brought up earlier by Commissioner Saltzman's and Commissioner Fish's recommendation to bring this to the voter. While certainly we have no objections to the voters voting on any measure, it is a more costly procedure to run a ballot measure campaign. And so, I mean, what's normative is for government leaders to act on behalf of the population. We use ballot measures as an extra means for voters to bring things forward when we feel like it's not being brought forward by our representatives, or it's a general large mandate and then we want legislators to work out the details. So I see nothing wrong with leaders working out the details of a complex problem like this and actually providing the leadership that we're calling for. I would hope that you would all move forward today with this and would not draw this out for multiple years and great expense to all involved to have a protracted ballot campaign, if that's where it ends up. You know, I believe that the voters will certainly lead on this as well, but we call today for your leadership.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all your partnership and guidance on this process. You've been integral to the process.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Fritz. Good afternoon, Mayor Hales, Commissioners Saltzman, Fritz, and Novick. I'm Serena Cruz. I come to you today as a mom, a Sabin neighbor, and a former candidate for Portland City Council. And I'm here to show my support for Open and Accountable Elections. I don't think that taking big donations from people means that you listen to them more. But what I like about Open and Accountable Elections reform is that it treats everyone like a big donor, so that even small donations have a big impact. And it does it all within our existing ways of campaigning. Under this system, you still need to make your case to both donors and voters. You still need remits, a website, house parties, and yes, you'll still dial for dollars. But now, every, but under the new program, every donation counts. When every donation counts, so does every perspective. Candidates are freer to think about a broader set of issues, to hear from more of Portland, in particular, on those who are underrepresented in City Council, women, people of color, LGBTQ folks, and East Portlanders. To that goal of engaging underrepresented Portlanders, I have a recommendation for the proposal. I think that requiring candidates to file only by petition, by collecting 100 signatures, is an unnecessary barrier, in particular, to candidates committed to engaging new parts of the electorate. If I'm trying to engage voters for the first time, who typically don't participate in Portland elections, it seems a little backwards to me. I imagine first trying to explain to folks that I'm running and then that I need their signature right now, but that I'll come back and hope that they will support me with a donation that will be matched. It seems like it's a hurdle not worth going through and one that disadvantages potential voters that don't already know their way around elections. I'd rather see a candidate be able to file by fee if they want, head straight into engaging new donors without complicating the message further. As you all know, a complicated message can sow distrust, and distrust is at the heart of our problems today. I'm excited to see so many new voices come together, shaping and supporting this proposal. Now more than ever, I can think of no stronger statement than a unanimous City Council saying that our voices matter, not just on the city's advisory committees and task forces, but alongside you, helping to make Portland a better place from the highest decision-making table we have, our elected City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Iris Hodge. I'm here representing Main Street Alliance of Oregon. Thank you, Mayor Hales and Commissioners, for letting me speak on this very important issue today. I'm here to represent Main Street Alliance of Oregon. We are a coalition of over 3,000 small business owners across the state, with nearly 1,000 in Portland. We bring forward the voices of Oregon's small business owners on key public policy issues. I also wanted to thank Commissioner Fritz for your leadership on this issue. We're excited to be working on this. Main Street Alliance of Oregon supports the adoption of the Open and Accountable Elections Initiative because it will provide opportunities for more diverse candidates to run for office and represent their communities. This effort would encourage more small business owners, women, people of color, young people, people from immigrant communities, to run for office and engage with their elected officials. Currently, our democracy is out of balance. Wealthy donors and corporate interests continue to influence our elections and our local policy conversations. Candidates are forced to spend more time raising money from a small group of wealthy individuals and special interest groups. Candidates have less time to spend engaging with their everyday constituents. Open and accountable elections can change how candidates campaign because small donations from everyday Portlanders are matched. Candidates have an incentive to spend more time engaging with people of all backgrounds, such as small businesses, students, renters, people of color, seniors, and working people. Therefore, MSA Oregon urges you to adopt Open and Accountable Elections.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thanks very much. Do you have some other invited testimony?
I didn't know. Did anybody else want to testify?
All right, then, let's take action then first on your package of amendments.
The, on the substitute, right?
Yes, on adopting the substitute, and then we'll take action on the amendment that you introduced, Dan, on behalf of Commissioner Fish.
And then we vote again at the end, right?
Yes, on the, on the agenda, so. Does it have to get set up?
Pass the second reading, that's right. Yes, thank you for keeping us on track here.
We can't, we can't amend and adopt on the same day. Okay. So let's take action first on your substitute, Commissioner Fritz.
Novick.
I'll give a big fat speech about how great this is when we pass it. Aye.
Fritz? Well, again, I want to state my great gratitude for everybody who's been involved in this. Commissioner, Commissioner Novick, Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Fish have made it better. And I was kind of surprised to read in the media that they thought I had traded votes. If I was going to do that, I would have held out for Tim Raines in the Hall of Fame, because that was a hard one for me, but I got there. So, you know, obviously, I've been working on this as part of the system for 11 years. And it's a really good day. Thank you very much for Cristina Neves and Tim Creel on my staff, and everybody who's here kind of waiting for us to vote, to send this on to second reading at 15 minutes after 5:00. Thank you. Thank you for everybody who's been involved. This is, is going to open things up, and that's what we need. Aye.
Commissioner, I forgot to say one thing, that in Portland, December 7th is now a day that will live in fammy.
Saltzman?
No.
Hales?
Well, first, Commissioner Fritz, thank you for once again leading from the heart, because you have a habit of doing that, and it serves us well. I'm not sure who would win this beer bet, but somewhere between Dan and me, I've run nine, I've led nine campaigns in the city of Portland, all of them successful, and then helped out on a few more, like the Second Parks Bond Measure or the gas tax. So I've had a lot of experience with running for office or leading campaigns in the city. And there's some good news and bad news about our body politic. One is that no one in Portland politics is bought and paid for. We have ethical people serving to the best of their ability here in this council and in other local offices. But of course, the money problem is here too. The problem, of course, is the arms race of big expensive candidates that's both a drain on the efforts of people who might need to be doing something else, like the public's business, or who have a life that they're trying to still lead while they're running for their first office. So this is a problem that needs to be addressed. And the current system, if you want to call it that, is a barrier to new candidates. Yes, they occasionally succeed, but it's a rarity, not a normal thing in our, in our politics. So I think this is a reform that will make our city politics healthier. And that passes the Hippocratic oath of first, doing no harm, and second, making it better. And I do believe that this will do this. I always try to measure twice and cut once, so I called my friend Bill de Blasio, the Mayor of New York, who's been living in a system like this for a while and had a good conversation about this with him, and he said yes, that what that system that has been very much a, one of the models for this one, has done for New York has meant that there is a more robust and open political system that allows new people to get into local leadership and reduces, obviously in a city where there's a great deal of big money, the influence of big money. And so to me, that was testimony that was very persuasive in addition to the good testimony we've heard here. Very pleased to support this. Aye. And now.
I would like to go on the amendment.
Okay.
Novick?
Commissioner Saltzman's amendment?
Yes.
No.
Well, the reason I like to leave things with two votes is then you can say everything you, or some of the things you've got to say before. And in this case, it was when I asked Amalia Alecón de Morris, the Director of ONI, if she thought that we could work to put the proposal in, inside her office, she said, sure, let's work on it, let's figure out how to get it done. And I really, really appreciate that because it has been challenging. As somebody said, there's actually no particularly perfect place, but for me, having it in ONI is a really good thing. The voters in November 8th supported Measure 26184 by 87%. That was the county's election reform. And that's, may or may not be constitutional, but it is an absolute indication that spending several hundred thousand dollars putting this on the ballot would be a waste of those several hundred thousand dollars. And we know we're going into a budget where we're going to have to find cuts, and I'm happy that we won't be spending $300,000 or more on a ballot measure question. We did refer the arts tax, I supported that. And as it came to light that the arts tax isn't exactly perfect and has some pretty glaring challenges and inequities in it, I have said, let's vote on the council to change that and make it better. And many on the council, well, the majority of the council, said, no, the voters have spoken, we would have to refer it back to the voters. So that's another good reason to do this. This is a well-known system. It will be Portlandized. And the suggestions that Kate Titus had for making sure that everybody who can legally donate is allowed to do so, even if they're not a registered voter with a signature, I think is one example of that. So the Campaign Commission is going to be looking at things and making it better. If they decide that changes, all of those changes and the initial administrative rules will come to council for a vote. So it'll be modeling being open and accountable. And I will just note that we didn't send the construction excise tax to the voters, and that also is going to raise, that's going to raise some money, which I appreciate having for affordable housing. So no. So no.
No. Saltzman.
Well, again, I think it would be a stronger, better proposal if it were voted on first by our residents. I just think it helps, and I think voters are accustomed to being very discerning about funding, what they choose to fund, what they choose not to fund. As I said, I think there's a lot of ingenuity behind this approach, and I commend Commissioner Fritz for that. But I do feel it would be stronger and withstand the test of time and all sorts of other little challenges that might be out there if it had the seal of approval from Portland voters. So I vote aye.
Hales.
No. Okay, so that comes back for second reading next week. Thank you very much, Commissioner Fritz. And let's, we have a few more items left in our endurance agenda here today. Start, next one is 1371.
1371, create a local improvement district to construct park improvements in Portland Open Space Sequence Local Improvement District in partnership with the Alprin Landscape Conservancy.
Okay, so this is a hearing on the formation of the local improvement district. We've had quite a bit of council discussion and deliberation about this project, including committing city funds to help support it. So I believe this is simply the opportunity for anyone that wishes to testify about the creation of the district.
Oh, Mayor, excuse me.
To speak, right?
It's been rescheduled to next week.
Oh, it's going to be scheduled to next week? Okay, I wonder why we didn't have staff here?
I thought we rescheduled it.
All right, so we'll reschedule it rather than having me try to explain it all.
I said that's the line, I'm sorry about that.
12:14 at some particular time?
Aye.
Regular agenda?
Yeah.
Morning session. Okay, so ordered, 1372.
1372, authorize an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for payment in the amount of $300,000 for the construction of Southwest First and Madison Sewer Rehabilitation Project as part of the County Courthouse Project.
Second reading, roll call vote, please.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. 1373?
1373, authorize a contract with the lowest responsible bidder for construction of the Alder Pump Station upgrade, project number E10359, for an estimated construction cost of $3,500,000.
Second reading, roll call.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. 1374?
1374, authorize a contract with the lowest responsible bidder for the construction of the Greenleaf Pump Station project at an estimated cost of $1,275,000.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, I should say.
It is good evening. So I'm Teresa Elliott, Chief Engineer, Portland Water Bureau. I will be very brief. I'm here to ask for your approval to allow the bureau to hire a construction contractor to build a new pump station at our Greenleaf, at our Greenleaf site on northwest skyline. This pump station will replace an existing pump station that has reached its end of its service life and is obsolete. The pump station will be designed specifically to improve the bureau's ability to provide fire flow in the West Hills. And because it meets the current building, it'll meet the current building code, it'll also be one that we can call a seismic improvement as well. Construction is expected to begin summer of 2017, and our construction cost is expected to be just around $1.3 million. We have a low, I'm sorry, we have a moderate level of confidence based on our rating scale. And then we have an MWESB aspirational goal of 20% with 14% going to the DMWs. Any questions?
Questions, Teresa. Thank you very much. Anyone want to speak on this item? If not, it returns for second reading next week. 1375?
1375, appeal of LRS Architects, Inc. against design commission's decision to approve with conditions specifically C. Point 1 and C. Point 2 corner building element, a new one-quarter block, 12-story residential building located at Northwest 14th Avenue and Northwest Raleigh Street.
And the council made a tentative decision in this case. These are findings to support that decision. Is there a motion to adopt the findings?
So moved.
Second. Question? Roll call to accept the findings.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. 1377?
1376?
We did 76 earlier, because it...
Oh, yeah, that's the...
So that's paired with the other item.
Too much, isn't it?
Right, and that's coming back tomorrow?
That's coming back, 1376, and, I'm sorry, I've lost the item number.
1364.
1364 are coming back for council deliberation and vote tomorrow.
So, Mayor, this is a good point for me, just to clarify on the record, I think it's our intent that if the weather doesn't cooperate tomorrow, that there will not be a council, in which case there will not be a hearing on inclusionary zoning at 2:00 PM or 2:10 PM. But if there is council tomorrow, we will have the hearing on inclusionary zoning.
Correct. We have not, we have not yet canceled a meeting.
No, since testimony was already taken on this, even if four of us could get here tomorrow, even if there isn't other public meetings, we could vote on it then.
Right. So it's my intent to conduct the 2:00 PM council meeting tomorrow, even if we arrive in snowshoes.
Right.
Because, one, we need to approve this project, because times are of the essence there. Obviously, the public can't get here for a big discussion on something like inclusionary zoning. That's another matter.
Right.
So I don't, I don't want to create that situation in which, you know, the public is literally frozen out, ha-ha, of participating in the council meeting. But this is a, this is a, this is a discussion and decision for us, having already had the hearing. So if it's four of us and a few beleaguered staff getting here to support the...
Yeah, well, I just want to add, I mean, at the end of the hearing earlier today, Housing Bureau staff said if we did, we could pass it next week with an emergency, and they'd still be in fine shape with respect to Ellington.
Oh, well...
So I want to prejudge what the weather's going to be like tomorrow or our ability to get here, but I just did want to make sure that people understood that the inclusionary zoning hearing will not occur tomorrow if the weather doesn't cooperate.
Okay. All right.
And it will occur instead on Tuesday.
All right, so we are, our plan is to act on 1364 and 1376 tomorrow regardless, and we'll see about the rest. Okay? That work for everyone? Okay. So then, that item is continued till tomorrow. 1377, we can take up now.
Authorize a contract with CBRE-HMF, Inc. for facilitation of refinance of the Headwaters Apartments for not to exceed amount of $350,000.
Commissioner Saltzman, you have any comments about this one?
Yeah, this, this item is the refinancing of the Headwaters Apartments in Southwest. The refinancing will convert market rate units at the Headwaters into affordable units. And importantly, would also provide for funding for seismic upgrades and rehab of the Fairfield Apartments. The Fairfield is an important part of our affordable housing stock, providing homes in the central city for very low-income, medically fragile people, and individuals with disabilities. I don't think anybody here from the bureau is here to present on this, but I do want to thank Kurt Krieger for figuring out this refinancing. Both the rehab of the Fairfield and the conversion of the Headwaters to affordable housing have been on the to-do list of the Housing Bureau for a long time, but it took Kurt Krieger coming along to help figure out a solution to both. And Carl Dinkelspiel was integral to that too, but I'm sure he doesn't want to say anything.
He would if we, he would if we made it.
I didn't see you there, Carl, but, yeah.
All right.
Time's late, yeah. So I would urge approval.
I'm not quite sure, why are we dedicating money to, for a refinance?
All right, Carl, you are on the spot. Come on up.
See to my ability at this hour.
You did fine, but that's a good technical question.
Hi, Carl Dinkelspiel, the senior program manager at the Housing Bureau. So this, the item before you is, is simply to approve the contract for CBRE, who will facilitate a refinance for the Headwaters. So Headwaters has debt that was taken out by the city through Citylight's bonds about 10 years ago or something like that. We will be refinancing that. The building is now more valuable than it was, and so we'll ask CBRE to facilitate a HUD loan to take out some portion of the city financing.
So is this $350,000 to pay off the loan?
No, not at all. It's just simply to...
It costs that much to refinance it?
There are fees for CBRE to finance the loan.
And how much will we save by refinancing?
The question is not really around the savings, it's really around repositioning the asset, so that the asset currently does not have affordability restrictions. We will, through this refinancing, have 40% of the units at 60% of median family income. We will also generate, as Commissioner Saltzman said, we will also generate income so that we can use it on the Fairfield, which the city also owns, so we rehab the Fairfield.
And again, I apologize, it's been a very long day.
It has.
So in plain talking like mortgages, are we paying off the mortgage or are we taking out another mortgage?
Yes, we are paying off, we are paying off the mortgage, we're paying off the existing mortgage with a new mortgage.
And then getting another one?
And it's a, it's what's called a cash-out refinance.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Very helpful. Thank you. Okay, no other questions for Carl? Anyone want to speak on this item? If not, it's a, it's a, an emergency, it is in an emergency ordinance, we can vote. Let's do, please.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Colleagues, I've been proud to serve with you this long day. Aye.
Saltzman?
One for the record books. Aye.
Hales.
Thank you all. Aye, and we are recessed till tomorrow at 2:00 PM.
One more that you continued to 2:00 PM.
Oh, right.
It's 1361.
What's the number again?
1361.
61.
Right.
Oh, yeah, that was, we wanted that pulled back to Mayor's office, please.
Pull that back to my office for now. All right, is that okay, Rachel?
I've had, I could just put on the record that we had some conversation by email, and I thought the recommendation was to not, to look at the whole thing rather than move ahead with this bit and not take care of the other things.
We're going to pull it back for now and put it back on the calendar later.
Thank you.
Aye. Okay.